Good evening. I would like to call the Sacramento City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
It's Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and this meeting is broadcast live this evening. There's a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable, Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent position. Speaker's slips are located in the back. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it in to the assistant clerk at the front. We have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need them. And for those who have parked across the street in the garage and might need validated parking, we do have that available. If you see the assistant clerk at the front, they will explain that process to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask our animal shelter director, Gina Nepp, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would rise, please. Welcome. It's a grand entrance. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we have, do we have any closed session report?
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to report out of closed session.
At this point. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to special presentations. We want to recognize Kim Pacini-Houch. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think you did a pretty good job on that name. I had to ask myself about it. It's a very special thing to be able to recognize somebody who's done something so tremendous, not only that benefits the city, but really our region, and it spreads far and wide, but especially because it helped so many animals in need in our city. 1,097 shelter pets were adopted because of Kim's generosity. She was the realist. She was inspired to give back, and one of the things that she realized is that during the holiday season, a lot of people wanted to adopt animals but couldn't afford it. And she threw our Front Street Animal Shelter, and you saw, Gina, why don't you and Kim, I'm sure you're here, why don't you come up, decided to make a difference. And she sponsored all the cat and dog adoptions from November 16th through December 31st of 2016, leading to that example, which was then replicated, I know, in other counties in the region and as far and wide as other parts of the country. The story made it to Germany, Portugal, and France, and really reflected very beneficially, Kim, on not only Sacramento, but on our values and the things that we care about. But it also showed that our community was willing to help and to help these animals in need if only they had a little assistance. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank Gina and her staff, Bobby, and everyone else at the shelter, because Gina, she's a fixer, but she's an initiator, and she's somebody who helped us start our 3-1-1 program. And when we sent her originally to the shelter just before I got elected, it was because it was in such a sad state, we were thinking about closing it. Our leave-alive rates were very low. I'm embarrassed to even say how low they were. And it's all been turned around. And it's by engaging volunteers, and I see some of the Front Street volunteers here. Let's give them, why don't you, Kim, come on. But it's that spirit, yeah, volunteers, come on, stand up. Why don't you come stand behind? Yeah. Or not, yeah. Come on down, as they say on TV. It's just a tremendous reflection of what a city with a can-do spirit and a community that cares can really make a difference. So, Kim, it's really a pleasure to thank you, not only for your generosity, but for sparking a movement that really showed a lot of people what's possible. If only we have that first spark to do so much. So, thank you. And I don't know if my colleagues or you would like to contribute something.
Please.
I just can't tell you how exciting this last couple of months has been for all of us involved in the shelter. And I'm so honored to be here today, and it truly has been the highlight of my life to be an advocate for the animal shelter. I adopted my first little dog there 30-something years ago, and it was a very grim place. But today, you're doing such great work, and Gina and Bobby and all the volunteers and the staff worked tirelessly, and I'm very grateful. And I want to shout out to our local press who kept the story fresh daily with having us on air, and the Black Friday lines just went on and on every day in 32 days to adopt 1,100 animals. That included three rabbits, by the way. And so, the rest were dogs and cats, but it was just a phenomenon that nobody could have predicted. So, my heart is full of gratitude, and I also want to thank the other community, people that helped us. Blake Snyder from Elk Grove Toyota stepped up and donated $10,000 in addition to what other people were donating online to pay for the spay and neutering. The shelter was so backed up. So, the need is great. It's really, truly my greatest hope that we can continue the march to stop this pet overpopulation by reaching out into the community with greater outreach to spay and neuter our animals so that we can really put the shelter out of business. That would be the greatest hope. But we know that that will never happen. But I'm here to be a continued supporter of Front Street and the city's efforts to manage the pet overpopulation. And so, thank you all, and really, the heroic efforts of the shelter and the staff, they worked so hard for 32 days. Can you imagine 1,100 animals? That's like 100 animals a day to be adopted in addition to their regular duties. They were exhausted, and thank you so much for the volunteers and the shelter staff, and Gina and Bobby, and everyone who made this possible. I was, I had the easiest job in the world, a check writer. That's the easiest thing. I know it's important, but they did the work. They really deserve the accolades here today. So, thank you so much.
Gina, I don't know if you want to add to that. Thank you, Kim.
Yes.
Gina?
Everything she said, no.
Ghetto.
Yeah, 31 days, 155 hours, 1,097 animals with the same team we always do our normal work with. And it inspired a national movement that we're very proud of. We're going to do it again, and thank you for your continued support of the work that we do.
Why don't you come down? We'll do a quick photo.
Okay. I wanted to say one more thing. This little lady next to me, Peggy Coppin, has been a longtime friend of our family. And it wasn't until Peggy alerted me at her retirement that she was donating her time to be a volunteer at Front Street that I was even aware of the nonprofit wing of the city shelter. So, I really want to say, Peggy, thank you for getting us involved. Good, bad, indifferent, right? So, you're an angel, and she's the reason why I even knew that the nonprofit wing existed. So, we've got a lot of great work to do, and I'm really grateful for the council for supporting the shelter. It's our city, it's our shelter, and we want to be very proud of the work that we do at the shelter on behalf of you. And thank you, Mayor, for having us here today.
Of course. Great way to start the meeting. Congratulations, and thank you.
All chairs, come on. We have Gina's gear man come up.
It's my gear. It's already all set up.
Okay, great. Okay, got two here. Okay, right up here. One, two, three. Okay, one with Bobby's. Oh, this is nice. No, it's very zoomed in. Three. One, two, three. Prima. Thank you.
Thank you. How?
Thank you, Mayor.
So much.
Thank you.
You too. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
That's a great way to start the meeting.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Let us move on to the consent calendar.
Okay.
Are there any items on the consent calendar? Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, we do. We have items 1 through 11. For the consent calendar, we have several people that have signed up to speak. Should also be noted for the record that on item number six, Member Hanson will abstain. Item number nine, we have a member who wishes to comment. I have no other changes, additions, or corrections, so if it is the chair's pleasure, we will start with the speakers.
Yes.
Okay. So, for item number one, we have Mac Worthy.
Good afternoon, panel. On the memorial auditorium, you've got a good team of people. I know some of them personally, I've sat down with them and talked to them. I don't know the contractor, but we have some people coming here because they use some of the same language I used about making money over there. But the community center should be towed down and put under park. You've got to make money only through the year instead of events, because no community center that I know of, that I've touched base with, was in North Carolina a few years ago under park, and then they still in red ink. So, you want to do something over there, and you're working with, and I hope that the public will get to know these people. You will see some people that mean business. That's from the private sector, no punches pool, they're going to tell you direct in your face what they're going to do and how you're going to do it, who we're going to contract to and how we're going to contract to. And what is the caveat of being in a red ankle there? So, sit down with them and talk to them, and you'll get the knowledge that I have.
Okay. And our next speaker for item number three is Gretchen Steinberg. Item number three is the 16 Historic Preservation Fund grant.
I'm Gretchen Steinberg, president of SACMOD, a nonprofit dedicated to preserving modern art, architecture, and design in the Sacramento region. We are a partner and provider of local matching funds for the Mid-Century Modern Historic Resources Context Survey. We are investing 80% of the proceeds from our last home tour and giving access to our research and archival materials gathered over the last seven years. $27,000 is a large amount for our small nonprofit, and our contributions to the project represent thousands of hours of dedicated work. Our city's distinctive historic architecture and design contribute to its unique character and sense of place. These attributes enhance our quality of life and draw the interest of prospective businesses and creative people. This project will identify the different key features, characteristics, and types of mid-20th century modernism in Sacramento. This partnership effort will enrich our understanding of the time period around 1940 to 1970 and how it is reflected in our cityscape. We will know more about how Sacramento's architects, planners, builders, and contractors contributed to the unique places we still see today. It will also contribute to our city's long-term planning, help cultivate a sense of stewardship, and support the ultimate goals stated in the city's general plan to protect historical resources. Our city has just started to recognize its mid-century modern landmarks, as evidenced by the recent additions of two churches in Oak Park and a residence in Land Park to the Sacramento Register. We look forward to proactively working together with the city and its historic consultants to develop a more meaningful and deeper understanding of and appreciation for our cityscape. We must ensure our landmarks represent a true cross-section and walk through time with all periods and cultures elevated and celebrated for everyone to enjoy both today and in the future. Thank you.
Gretchen. Thank you, Gretchen. I know Councilmember Hanson has a question or a comment.
I just want to say thank you. The $26,000 from SACMOD that helped us accept this federal grant is really amazing, and the work of SACMOD, you've, you and Allen have really championed something very special, and I just want to say thank you.
And we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Your hard work.
The next two speakers are both for item number eight. It's James Clark and Joshua Foster. Item number eight is an herbicide application for the pre and post-emergent weed control in the parks.
Weed? Or weed?
Hello, council. I just want to address the application of herbicides in the city and ask the city council to make sure that they're not using toxic herbicides and pesticides such as glyphosate or neonic, which they're more of a pesticide, but, you know, we've already tried to call the city a bee haven. And while I understand the city wants to mitigate the impact of unruly weeds growing around places, because we can't have that going on, I want to make sure that we do so in old-fashioned, it's not harmful to our environment. Glyphosate itself has been shown to leak into water supplies, be cancer-causing, according to the World Health Organization, and can also have adverse impacts upon wildlife within the region. So, as you move forward, please try to take that into consideration when deciding which herbicides or pesticides to utilize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Joshua?
That guy stole my thunder, man. I signed up before him. Really, I noticed in here that one of the underlying issues as far as environmental considerations is that this particular application goes exempt. So, there's no evaluation of the environmental impact of spraying herbicides where our kids play in the parks. I'm not sure that that's a really great concept, and what they're falling under, the Environmental Quality Act, the problem with that is that, yes, they set that for certain things, and these parks do qualify, but the city could go a step further. They don't have to use the scapegoat of this act to spray this stuff. And I looked through the contract. There's nothing that says that they're going to, you know, follow any kind of guidelines. It does mention that the park's maintenance follows an IPM, but that's for pesticide management. And this is, this is an herbicide contract, so the two aren't even really related. So, really, I share Fago's sentiments, there needs to be further review, especially if we're claiming to be a safe haven for bees. And really, the application of a lot of these herbicides that are going unmentioned in here are detrimental to a lot of species, not exclusive to bees, but other species as well. And there's just, you guys are completely abandoning the concept of the impacts of those. And, and, I still have time. No Dakota Pipeline.
Okay. Here are the rules. We're going to take everybody from the public who wants to testify on any item, including public comment, but we're not going to have public demonstrations during the council meeting. Right? Please. So, hold your applause or your booing, to respect every speaker, what they say, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, then the last comment on the consent calendar is Member Harris for item number nine, which is the Electric Refuge Truck Trial Program.
Is our fleet manager, Mark Stevens, here? He is indeed. So, I wanted to call out this particular item because it's a trial of an all-electric garbage truck. Now, I don't know if that excites many of you, but it really does float my boat because I'm a big believer in electric vehicles, and our fleet is already one of the greenest in the nation. But this is just another way that this city is showing that we believe climate science and that we're taking a proactive approach about it. So, this is a demonstration project to see if an all-electric garbage hauling vehicle will work in Sacramento. So, Mr. Stevens, in the, in the staff report, you know, you talked about $300,000, but that doesn't give the whole picture. So, as I understand it, it's basically $200,000 to lease this thing for a year.
Correct.
And prove it out, and then we have the option to buy it for another $150,000 in combination with a federal grant.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that because it really wasn't spelled out in the staff report exactly how, if this vehicle works well for us for the first year.
Yes, if it works well, and we supply the additional $150,000, then it's ours for the term, for the life of the vehicle.
So, more than half the money coming from a federal grant?
More than half, yes. About $500,000 coming from a federal grant through motive power systems. Yes.
I just wanted to commend you for moving this forward. I really appreciate it, and I think it's a great thing for the city of Sacramento to do. One last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
About a previous speaker. Just so you know, we, we passed, I initiated and we passed a ban on the use of neonicotinoids in Sacramento last year on city property, and I'm quite pleased about that. And just so you know, herbicides generally do not mess with pollinators very much. They're not sprayed at a time usually when, when plants are flowering, they're usually applied when they're much younger. So, it's probably not going to be a big issue with pollinators. Now, the other concerns are concerns that I hear, and so we'll, we'll look at it.
Very good. Councilmember Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on item number one, the Memorial Auditorium upgrade. I see Desmond is here. Desmond, have we completed negotiations on these contracts?
So, yes, for the, for the contract with Architectural Nexus and the contract with writer Levitt Bucknell, we have completed negotiations. The one contract that I haven't yet brought forward is with the contractor who would be providing design assist services, and that is, that's Kitchell, and we're, we're still in the process of negotiating the contract with them.
Now, the two that we've already negotiated, have we included any community benefits?
We would be doing that as part of the, of the contractor. So, like with regard to local hiring, local business involvement, that would be part of the contract for the construction of the facility.
Okay.
At least that's how staff's handled it, for example, on, on the arena. That's a similar approach is what we're taking on this one, too.
I'd like to work with you to make sure that we get the right kinds of language and influence the communities that we're trying to help with our contracting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr, is there a motion on the consent calendar? Moved by Harris, seconded by Councilmember Gedda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Record reflected as clerk indicated.
Item number six.
On item number six, the consent calendar passes. So, let's move now to item 12, which is the public hearing.
This is the Innovate Corporate Center Mixed-Use Project.
Good evening. My name is Arwen Watt, and I'm the project planner for the Innovate Corporate Center Project, which is located northeast of the intersection of East Commerce Way and Arena Boulevard in North Natomas. The applicant is requesting the approval of entitlements to allow the development of 120-room hotel, three office buildings, and related employment center uses on 14 acres in the Arena Corporate Center Plan Unit Development. The proposal requires the following entitlements: a rezone, tentative map, and site plan and design review for the tentative map, the development of the hotel on 2.5 acres, and the schematic design of the remainder of the property. At this time, the applicant is requesting full entitlements for the hotel and only schematic approval for the remainder of the uses, which is the office buildings, employment center use, and parking structure. With the approval of this project, the applicant may develop the hotel site, but future site plan and design review entitlements will be required to develop the remainder of the site. Staff has reviewed the proposal and found the development overall to be consistent with the general plan, the Arena Corporate Center PUD guidelines, and Planning and Development Code. Staff recommends the city council approve the project, subject to the findings of fact and conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Do we have any public testimony on this item? Do we have any council comments? Councilmember Ashby?
Sure. I would like to ask the project proponent to come forward for just a minute, and I know it's not a controversial item, but just a point of privilege here, this is an exceptional project. It is an innovation center, and we are quite lucky to have this investment in the city of Sacramento, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about the full project. I know we're approving a piece of it today, but if you wanted to give just a couple-minute overview of what your vision is for the total project, I think the council would be happy to hear that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ashby. I first want to say thank you to staff. We agree with their staff report. Arwen and the rest of staff have worked really hard to get this thing in front of you today. We really appreciate all their hard work. Innovate Corporate Center is one of the first really employment-generating sites in the Natomas in the past decade-plus, so we're really excited to really bring some new project into the Natomas area. They're going to generate jobs for the area. It's a mixed-use campus of creative office space. It also has food outlets, kind of a farm-to-fork food outlet area, as well as the hospitality. All of these things kind of are synergistic with each other, and it's going to be a really a great addition on an otherwise vacant parcel out in Natomas. So, we're excited to be there. We think right now is the time to be developing in Natomas, and I love Sacramento, so we really look forward to breaking ground later this year and being here for quite some time. And so, I'm here for any questions, but otherwise, really appreciate all the work staff's done for us.
Sometimes when we step outside of the box to do the things that this council is asking developers to bring forward, it requires our staff to be creative along with us, and this is one of those projects, and so I'm grateful to the staff, and I'm very grateful to a patient developer, because I think Natomas is going to get a heck of a project here, and I am quite grateful for both. So, Mayor, with that being said, I'd like to move this item today.
Very good. It's been moved by Councilmember Ashby, seconded by Steve Harris.
A Natomas convention.
Seconded by Jeff Hanson. All in favor? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Measure passes. Congrat, another, more good work in Natomas. Excellent. Okay, let's move on to file item 13.
Okay, this is the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan Fee Adjustment.
Good evening again. On an annual basis, the city considers a fee adjustment in order to ensure accuracy of the funding to implement the 2003 Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan and to comply with the Incentive Take Permit and the Related Implementation Agreement. This year, a fee decrease is proposed for the 2017 construction season. The majority of the proposed fee decrease can be attributed to an estimated increase in cropland lease revenues, which is used to offset the administration, operations, and maintenance costs. The Natomas Basin Conservancy Board and staff recommend that the city council adopt the resolution that would decrease the Habitat Conservation Plan fees. Staff and John Roberts with the Natomas Basin Conservancy are available if you have any questions.
Okay. Are there any, any questions? Again, Councilmember Ashby, go ahead. Yes, it's okay.
John, would you come forward for just a second? This is John Roberts. He runs the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan for the city, which is basically the city's answer for habitat conservation. And he, we only see him a couple times a year, and usually it's for this fee update, which often is declining, and that's in part because he does such an amazing job, he's able to reduce fees. But I like to take any moment that I can to brag on this organization. By the way, we have sent some of our All-Stores to serve on that board over the years. Bill Edgar is currently there. We, we, this is something Sacramento can be very proud of. They have the highest standards for urban habitat conservation in the entire region, and it is quite a sight to behold, all because of John. 22 species, right?
Right.
22 species saved right here in our backyard, everything from plants to Swainson's hawks, my least favorite, the giant garter snake. I try to convince him to let that one go every year, never listens to me. But at any rate, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to say something and also to hear from me personally on the record. Thank you so much for continuing to do the amazing work you are doing out there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. I guess there'd be three highlights to talk about. One is for the 18th consecutive year the Conservancy has been able to successfully implement the city's commitments into the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. We don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue in the future with the same level of success. The second thing that I think would be of interest to the council is last year, we had our, our best year ever in terms of biological monitoring and the success of these endangered and threatened species. In fact, last year, for Councilmember Ashby's least favorite species, the aquatic giant garter snake, the numbers.
Giant, right? I mean, tell them, and it's in the water. Can you think of anything grosser, a giant snake in the water? No, thanks.
The populations were way higher than we need for mitigation qualification, and that's a, I think, a testament to the fact that these preserves that the city has helped found and, and fund are working. And the third thing I'll wrap up with is, at the encouragement of Councilmember Ashby and others, we have reached out to the public primarily in the form of our social media and website, and I'm pleased to tell you that for the last three consecutive months, the hits on our social media, which primarily consist of photographs of these threatened and endangered species, has doubled every month for the last three months. And I think it shows you how the public is interested in these, in protecting these species that have been. displaced by urbanization. It's really working well.
Does a great job. I'm happy to move the item, Mayor. Thank you, John.
Very good. Thank you. Moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Jennings, moved by Councilmember Ashby. Thank you. I remember hearing about this 20 years ago, still.
Sometime when you need a tour, Mayor, and you want to go take in really that beauty that is our habitat conservation, call John up and he'll take you out.
Happy to.
As long as you keep me away from the snake.
Yeah, it's gross. Stay away from the snake.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The measure passes unanimously, eight to nothing. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 14, which is adoption of the council rules and procedures file. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'd like to start by giving a quick overview of why this is on the agenda this evening and the process for moving forward. This is the annual review of our council rules and procedure, and as required in the document, we review annually, typically in January or as needed. This is a joint effort with the city attorney's office. We knew coming forward at this traditional time in January this year that most likely there will be additional changes that are going to be forthcoming and need to be added as a result of the remaining good governance deliverables that are still pending. So within the next two to three months, we know there will be adopted policies that will probably affect and impact this, so we fully anticipate that this report would come back at some point right after that to include those additional items as needed. So what we want to do at this point is, Matt Ruiac, the Assistant City Attorney, will be going through the changes that we've highlighted for this year's council rules and then open it for discussion for the council.
Very briefly, though, I want to make it clear, some of these rules are overlap with the revised sunshine ordinance that we are, that the law and ledge committee, as I understood, took up today, that's going to come back to the city council. For example, the rules of procedure here talk about ad hoc meetings, but it doesn't say anything about the sunshine ordinance requirement that in the ad hoc meetings be public going forward. So in a sense, some of this, some of these council rules and procedures are placeholder, if you will, until we get back the revised sunshine ordinance. I mean, I might prefer that we wait on this until we do the sunshine ordinance to avoid the confusion, but it's okay. Let's do it. But I just want to make sure that there is no confusion by those who have followed the ethics and transparency issues closely over the last year-plus.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Matthew Ruiac, Assistant City Attorney. I am just going to briefly describe for you the changes, the substantive changes, if you will, that have been proposed in the packet before you with the preface that the city clerk has already given you. This page is in your packet. I've put next to it for consideration, or if you're a reference, the pages at which these can be found in the proposed rule changes. Very simply, the first change was because of the preference of the council this year to eliminate all reference to the mayor pro temp position on the council. That's on page two of the proposed redline version. In chapter three, there is addition of language related to the prohibition of use by council members of social media during legislative body meetings. And to be clear, social media does not include texting or email, but just the traditional social media as understood. Also, in chapter three, on page six, pursuant to state law AB 1661 that became effective that was passed last year, the elected officials, the council members, are now required to take two hours of, I'm sorry, sexual harassment training within six months of taking office and every two years thereafter. So that's just consistent with state law.
Excuse me a sec.
I just want to ask a quick question. So we, through other means, my business, we do this as well, through our HR department, does this have to be, as long as it meets the requirements on the training itself, does it need to be through the city, or can the other that I take, which is basically the same course, qualify for that?
The law requires you to take training that meets the requirements of, you know, the certain requirements that they provide in there. As a matter of fact, we are not providing the direct training anymore. It's the online training through the clerk's office.
Typically, it's an online program.
As long as I have the certificate.
Right, as long as you have the certificate, you'll have met that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. In chapter five, there was a potential ambiguity with regard to when speakers were requested to submit speaker slips, and that change has been made on page nine to make it clear when speaker slips are due, as well as a change, a very minor change, to give the presiding officer flexibility to shorten or expand the speaking limits of individual speakers and/or a group of speakers.
Have a question on that one?
Yes, go ahead.
So the presiding officer can give people extra time, or in public comment, the presiding officer can delete, can reduce the time? Is that what you're saying?
As practice in past meetings where there is an excessive number of, or a large number of, public speakers, where there's been a practice of giving a total time across the spectrum of speakers, so obviously that might carve into the usual two minutes per speaker, so there's that flexibility. This change merely gives flexibility to the presiding officer to also potentially expand that time for individual speakers, so long as it's on a fair and equitable basis. It would have to be across-the-board equal without playing favorites to speakers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move through this quickly, please.
And so, the, on page 15, there was clarification to ensure, it was a little unclear, to make sure that council members had the ability to request continuances of public hearing items, so that has been added in chapter six. Chapter six also just provides a language clarification about teleconference meetings. Chapter seven is just an addition of the e-comment, which is currently the practice of the clerk, that e-commerce will be given to the council members if done on time. Chapter seven, section K, on page 22 and 23, is a more substantive provision that talks about the process to ensure that ordinances that go through the LNL, PFP, and adoption process are drafted and presented to the council consistent with the previous stage in the process, and that if there are changes in that process, those changes need to be submitted in writing, and if there are substantive changes at the time of passage that weren't available at PFP, the item may be continued to a date at the council's discretion. And then there was two changes to the chapter 13 law and ledge. I'm sorry, there was a change to the electronic voting system that's being added this spring, as well as two changes in the law and ledge chapter. One, with respect to development agreements and parking rate ordinances to the list of ordinances not needing to go to the law and legislation committee, as well as just technical rewording without any change in substance of how ordinances get requested and then sent to LNL. So with that, if you have any questions.
Remember, the big change here, too, is that council members now have the authority to introduce amendments to ordinances. They don't, won't just come from the staff, but an obligation to publish, if you will, your suggested amendments at least several days ahead of time so that the council can debate it, and this will make it a much more effective and efficient way for both the public and the council to be able to debate different views of an ordinance, because the way it's worked in the past, it's all or nothing up here. Amendments get made on the dais, and as we used to say, you know, you never legislate from the dais. It's dangerous. There should be time to consider amendments ahead of time. I thank Councilmember Gueda for pushing that over the months. Okay? Very, very good. Are there questions for, let's see, Councilmember Carr?
No, that was the last time. I don't have a question.
I'm sorry, okay.
That was the last item.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have public speakers on this. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, so we have five that have signed up to speak. We'll start with McWorthy, James Clark, and then Trina Allen.
Hold on, we want to make it clear. My comments here is not testimony. I'm speaking from the federal law, freedom of speech. Now, we have seen.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. You are welcome to comment on the measure before us. If you want to make public, hold on. If you want to make public comment about a matter that isn't on the agenda, you're welcome to comment during public comment, but you need to speak to the agenda item, please. If not, then you can wait for public comment, sir.
What I'm saying to you is, we have seen this changed five or six times here on procedures here. Now, we look at procedures here that's within the legislation. We ain't seen not one challenge of constitutionality in this city over four years. Not one person, because the public does not have the funding to challenge what is going on here. We got racketeering going on here within.
But what does this have to do with the council rules and procedures, sir?
With rules and procedures, you are using them to self-empower yourself, not to help the public. That's the bottom line.
I said no public demonstrations, please. I'll let the speaker continue to make his point.
And those are the things that if you are saying what you want to hear, somebody's saying what you want to hear, you want to extend that time. I ain't gonna never tell you what you want to hear. I'mma always speak for the public, because the public needs it. Just like the clap. You can clap till when you are cherishing the rhetoric, but when you're opposed to rhetoric, you don't want it clapped. And that is you are self-empowering yourself, and we want to see a change in that, and the only way we're gonna change in that is go to state or federal law.
James Clark?
Next.
So, I want to say there are some things I like on this, especially the additional language that gets rid of the use of social media while in council, because we all know that we've seen that be kind of a problem, and it's very disrespectful to the public. The council's ability to alter the time for the public, I feel, is opening it up for prejudices, as well as a violation of these people's rights that have sat here all night. They're not getting paid like you guys are to be here, mind you, to be able to have their voices heard, and then if you don't like that conversation, you can shut it down. That's not free speech. That's discretionary listening, and I feel that that is a way of silencing the public that I've seen this council use multiple times, such as the telling people that they cannot applause. I sit here and watch it every week. When it's something that the council's happy about, people applaud, you don't say anything about it. But as soon as somebody has a conversation about something that you don't agree with and they applaud at the end, you're getting ready to shut down meetings and throw them out. And the way this reads, the way this looks, that's not going to stop based on the way this reads. Teleconferencing meetings, what was the other one? Down here, the additional language to address public comments via email? Is there a way we can make sure that those public comments, since they're trying to make it so people can hear it also, are shown on the overhead or something so that the public can be aware of those public comments that might not be able to get online? And also, can we redo the three minutes instead of two minutes for people to speak? It's hard to get information out and make a decent presentation to a council in two minutes. And maybe even put public comments back at the beginning of the meeting so that people with children and jobs and all this aren't sitting here all night without getting paid just to hope that they can actually address this council. Not that you'll listen anyways, but.
And Trina Allen, and then David Andre, and Wanda would be the last speaker.
Welcome, new folks. I hope you will help walk this council in a new direction. I'll be short and sweet regarding rules and procedures. I would like to see provisions that this council will remain in chambers unless there is truly an unsafe situation. When you walk out on dissent, you walk on your chance to learn. Two, that you actively listen through the entire meeting, especially during public comment. Many of you leave during that time, and that's a time when we really do need to be heard. This is our only chance to be heard by you often, okay? Your stewardship of this meeting is the same as when participates are consenting and co-gradulatory as when they are dissenting. Applause should always be acceptable. I understand that you don't want demonstrations, but I will tell you, the loudest thing I ever heard in here was when the Kings won, or when the Golden Arena was accepted.
So can I just say, I, we won't take more, I think you make a fair point.
Well, thank you.
I know, I do. I think, you know, applause is okay. I just don't want there to be such distraction, right? That it's hard to do our business. I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find the right balance here, too, and I could use your help and cooperation in trying to figure out how we can do our business and you can be heard, all right?
So I may give you an example really quickly. This meeting, I don't know if you were there or not, but on October 13th, it was shut down. On October 13th, this meeting was shut down. It was, people were at, the council members asked to leave over applause, and I would say it was less applause than a few weeks before when we were talking about the community center. During that day, during the October 13th meeting, this room was filled with black people. During the theater meeting, it was filled, it was a predominantly white audience, you know, a wealthy white audience. And I do, so I do see this. So I want that, I don't, whatever you decide it to be, I want it to be the same, and I'm not discretionary. Number four, I would very much like to return public comment to the beginning and back to three minutes, and I don't want to see it limited at all unless it goes past midnight, your public servants. Five, the public be able to reference specific actions of council members when they relate to the topic. I understand I'm not, shouldn't be talking about you, what you do on Friday night, that's none of my business, but if it relates to the topic at hand, I would like to be able to reference, oh, council member so-and-so said this.
You can do that. No, I think, well, let me tell you the way I interpret the rule. You can mention the member by name if it's in the course, if it's in the course of commenting on the member's particular argument, et cetera. It's just when it gets personal and directive that it's out of bounds.
I've been asked to leave for stating someone's name in regards to what we were talking about.
Okay, well.
Just so we're clear. But I appreciate that. That's something that I would very much like to see. I understand I'm not talking about what happened Friday night. I get that. It's none of my business. Also, we will provide you with full transparency of your actions, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good testimony. David?
David Andre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The activist community needs a dialogue on these rules. We're here, we're not getting paid, we're trying to be a voice for the community. For the most part, we are the voice for the community, especially the people that have the least. If we're intimidated to talk here, we don't have any, like, most of us don't have law degrees, where we can fight you and we can say things and we can reference things. This is what we have, so we try to follow these rules. A while back, we had Robert's Rules of Order. We're all studying, taking crib notes, making sure. Then you changed it. This administration didn't, but some of the same members, of course, were here when you changed it. It makes it very confusing to what's allowable. When I see developers come in here with their cheerleading groups, it's all standing up and all this stuff, and yay, yay, rah, rah, rah! But when we talk about people dying in the streets, and we mentioned that lady that died, and we were talking about how the police take people's sleeping bags away, it's, hey, don't say nothing, don't mention nobody. It's a double standard, so I really respectfully ask that we address that.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do our best.
Okay, Wanda? Wanda's the last speaker on this item.
Okay. Welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're right.
Not in according to each one of these people.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, no, no. I've been thrown out of here on several occasions, Darrell, because I spoke out, because I sat up here and I mentioned someone's name, and several of these same people are sitting on your panel right now, so you, all you guys are going to do is keep on putting rules, 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 and when it comes to you guys, there's no rules.
Okay. Right. Hearing the public testimony, is there a motion on the council rules and procedures recognizing that they are going to be updated and changed when we have the sunshine ordinance completed? I'm sorry, we've got Councilmember Hanson. Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to suggest that since we have another chance for this to come back, we look at our legislating process. I know we're making some updates here. I've been looking at other cities and what they do. They have a more formal, you can submit an idea, and then the member can kind of track it. I might suggest to help reduce some of the confusion, that we look at those models, and if there's a chance incorporated when it comes back, just so that we have less confusion around our policymaking.
Talking about for the public to submit an idea or a member to?
For members, from a member's standpoint.
If you have other suggestions to improve the way we consider and pass ordinance or laws, all for it. So--
Yeah, that's it, so that we can introduce an idea and follow it and help move it through.
Yes?
I'll make the motion to--
I'm pro-idea, by the way.
Adopt the-- You're pro, everyone.
Okay, go.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Jeff Harris has got a comment. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, I noticed there was a bit of a reaction about the piece about social media. I'd just like to challenge all the listeners, people watching, to not assume. You may see me up here with my iPad. I want you to know that this is the agenda that I'm looking at. So, this is the staff report for every item. And as, you know, don't assume that we're all up here playing with Facebook, is generally not the case. We take this business very seriously, and if you look at this computer or that iPad over there, I think that you're gonna find that we're either looking at agenda items or researching state law that's pertinent to the item that we're looking at. So, please don't assume.
Very good. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to build on Councilmember Harris's point, that we all have staff up here. And many times, if you were to go home and take a look at the time that you see a posting on social media, it could be during the course of this meeting. And I can assure you that that's not what I'm doing up here, and I don't believe my colleagues are doing it at all. But I do challenge my staff to make sure that they get out to those who follow us on social media, all the important events that are going on at this meeting. So, I just want to make sure that the record shows that that might happen at any point in time. But that's not what we're doing up here. It is what we've directed our staff to do. I know that's the case for me.
Very good. We now have a motion and a second on the rules, to change the flexible rules, the changing rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The measure passes. Thank you very, very much. Let us now go to item 15, which is the highlight of the night. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Ashby in a moment, but if I may make some opening comments myself. As you know, you've heard it every week, that every week during the first 10 to 12 weeks here, we want to highlight a different city priority. And as I campaigned for this office, and since the June election, I have heard a lot about the city's challenges around equity and diversity. And it's across the board. And we are holding this meeting tonight to ensure that the members of the public understand that fixing this is going to be a city priority. And tonight, we deal with gender equity. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Ashby, who had just an outstanding meeting here last Thursday with a packed City Council chamber, highlighting and focusing on the issues of gender equity. But I want to be clear to everybody, because it could get lost or misunderstood. We are going to address the issues of racial and ethnic diversity, and racial and gender equity as well in these chambers within the next month. And it's not that one is more important than the other, they're equally important. But here is a start. Sunday, Saturday, of course, we had this unbelievable march in Sacramento. Women's March, 25,000 people, never seen anything quite like it. And so, you know, we start here, but this is co-equal to the other equity issues that we tackle and will tackle over the next month as well. And then, by the way, just to put a finer point on it, tonight, and what we do next month, will not be a singular opportunity to address these issues, because part of improving is to make sure that we come back, and we come back again in public session to measure our progress. And if we're not making the progress that we must, to ask ourselves why, and to take specific actions to ensure that we are successful. So, this is not just, you know, a throwaway here. This is the beginning. I'm in Week Four here. So, this is just the beginning. And it's not just me, it's all these members committed to the exact same thing. So, tonight, Councilmember Ashby takes the lead on this crucial issue of gender equity. Appreciate and applaud you, and let's get going.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think we are going to start with a presentation from Melissa Cheney, our Human Resources Director, who's just gonna give a broad overview of where we are on diversity and equity, and then I'm gonna pick it up from there. Go ahead and start, Melissa.
So, I just wanted, hi, this is Melissa Cheney, the HR Director. I just wanted to go over some of the key audit findings and get us back up to speed where we were and how we're moving forward, and do a quick update on some of the things that we have been working on within the last couple of months. So, the four key audit findings that came out of the Auditor's Report back in August were employment gaps for minorities and women, lack of diversity in management, lack of diversity in public safety, and pay equity issues, both for women and minorities. The council actions that were brought forward in September were hire a diversity equity manager, create a diversity inclusion plan, hire an organizational development manager, and use budget audit committee as a resource. We've been back to the budget audit committee twice since we have had the September council meeting, and this is our second time back to council, including the September council meeting. We basically wanted, out of the report, we just, the City Council has decided that, and staff completely agrees, that we want to be a model city for the state of California and actually for the nation. The goal is to reflect the city's population. We want to have diversity and equity and promotional opportunities, education and management, including unconscious bias training, and all sorts of training that we can help our managers and our hiring supervisors be able to get, move forward in hiring and promoting diverse candidates. We'd also like to make public safety, diversity a priority, procedural and cultural changes within the organization, and also get the community involved in our processes. So, an update on the diversity and equity manager position. Currently, that position is being, we are in the process of recruiting. It closes on February 10th of 2017. We have an expected hire date probably around late March of 2017, and we actually received a lot of feedback from employee groups and from the community regarding the flyer and the type of outreach that we would be doing for that recruitment. The diversity inclusion plan, that will be part of the diversity and equity managers' key functions when they first start, and we are hoping to have something finalized and brought back to council sometime in June of 2017. We have hired the organizational development manager. That position is overseeing the hiring, training, and development of employees. With that position, we have actually been kind of busy doing a lot of outreach with the community. We've gone to two Latino stakeholder meetings in the last couple of months, a Latino roundtable. We have worked with the African-American Employees Leadership Council, that's here with the city of Sacramento, and we've also gone to the Greater Sacramento Urban League. On Thursday, we will be attending a chamber orientation breakfast Thursday morning, and that includes the Black Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, and the Rainbow Chamber. Part of what we will be doing is, over the next couple of months, are going to a bunch of job fairs that are throughout the community. So, we have a bilingual Latino career fair in February. We're gonna go to Sacramento State to their career fair, the Greater Sacramento Urban League, the Latinas in Leadership Conference, and then a Black Dialogue Series with the African-American Community Services Agency in San Jose. Those are what we will be doing over the next 30 days. And so, I'd like to actually, once we get passed through those career fairs and see how they're working, that's when I'd like to come back next month to council and give a better update, and a little bit more complete update on what we're doing with the diversity hiring and moving forward, and also have a little bit more of a outline available to you of what our organizational development manager will be working on. We will continue to utilize the budget audit committee as a lead in monitoring our diversity inclusion issues, and we'll be doing quarterly check-ins with that group. So, I've just kind of given a brief overview of what we're doing on the diversity side, and now I'd like to turn it over.
Thanks, Melissa. If you guys want to have a seat over there, that'd be great. And then, Mayor, I'm gonna take it from here.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Well, but maybe your presentation will answer. I just sort of want to know, if I may, the hiring of the diversity manager is an essential and important first step. But what are we thinking about beyond that? I mean, is that in, is that--
Let me try it, and then if you still need more information, then we'll come back around at the end. So, first of all, I hope for people in the room tonight, my hope is that you kind of, this is a chance for us to kind of open the doors or take the roof off of City Hall, for you to see how we've been working on diversity and equity issues since we first made this commitment to you back in September. So, you're getting a lot of detail on where we are with little things, like outreach and some of the events she's going to. But I want people to really see what we're trying to do here. First of all, because I see many of you in the room, and because I too participated in the march proudly this weekend with my family, my little girl, and my husband and kids, I know that many of you are looking for an outlet to get involved. And so, I'd like to start by saying, how many of you are here? Would you please stand up? Terrific, fantastic. Thank you so much. It is my commitment to you to continue to try to find opportunities for you to engage, and to put them out there in meaningful ways, so that you can participate in the process that is making our corner of the world better, more equitable, and more diverse. And that is my commitment to you from this day forward, and really from September. Mayor Steinberg, I want to thank you for your commitment to promoting diversity and gender equity, and really to this council. It is an all-male council, except for me, but I have met zero resistance in moving equity issues forward, and that says a lot about them, and they deserve a ton of credit, right, for that. I also want to thank Melissa, because, you know, we sort of came forward with this idea in September, and we had some tall, quick deliverables. And when I first sat down with you at the beginning of the year to hear where you were, I was impressed with how quickly you had moved, how many hires you had made, and what programs you already had in place. I know this is exceptionally meaningful to you, and that you've been a leadership, you've been in leadership in this issue, but it is very impressive. It's a great body of work, and I'm really proud of you and what your department has done. My portion of this presentation tonight is gonna focus on the efforts related to gender parity, creating opportunities to promote women in all parts of the organization, with the desire to make the city of Sacramento a leader in our region, and in our state, and really in the nation, as an employer, and a partner towards advancing gender equity efforts publicly and privately. In September, I brought forward what I call the Report Card, a Gender Parity in the City of Sacramento Report Card. It highlighted the current conditions of employment in the city of Sacramento, meaning city employees, and the workforce, and we made specific recommendations based on those findings. We had help from the Independent Budget Analyst Office and from our Auditor's Office, and they brought forward numbers. Here's just a couple of the numbers that help explain what's happening in the city of Sacramento. The population of our city is 50.4% female, so majority, right? Slightly, majority. The city of Sacramento's workforce is 36% female. And here's the more alarming part, okay? Women make up approximately 55%, so good, of the income bracket, 0 to 30,000 a year. That's the first entry-level pay scale for the city of Sacramento, might even be part-time, big variety in there. But that income bracket, the first one, 0 to 35, women are more than half. When you get to the top bracket for the city of Sacramento, which is basically 180,000 a year plus, women make up just 25% of that bracket. So, a lot of what we're gonna talk about tonight and moving forward isn't about so much men and women making the same amount, although that is an issue. It's about women having those same opportunities to advance through the workforce and eventually become supervisors, managers, elected officials, members of the charter officers, those highest level positions in the city of Sacramento, and how we reach that number, because 25% is unacceptable, okay? And when you take those numbers and you add a lens for diversity, meaning ethnicity, the numbers get worse and worse and worse. And the group to fare the worst are black women. And so, that needs to be the target group that we move forward with, and that's why you hear the efforts coming out of HR to really target women who are in a diverse setting. So, where we can find both gender and diversity in one place to recruit, we're working hard on that, so that we can start to shrink that gap. But it's gonna take us some time. We want to keep going with it. In addition to reviewing the audit of the equity findings in this report card, we brought forward three specific recommendations. Besides budget and audit, and the independent budget analyst, and the auditor, I had a lot of help on this. And it was a group that, I just want to point them out, because I think they're spectacular. As soon as I decided to do this report card, I sought out some women leaders in the city to see what they think, and I found out that there was a very informal group, they don't even really have a name, so now they have a name, it's Women's Leadership Group. It's really creative, I know. But they were meeting informally, they'd had a couple of, like, potluck-type brown-bag lunches, just to sort of talk to each other and mentor, but they weren't formal. I asked them to become more formal. This is, you know, maybe last September or so. And since then, they have been thrown way out in front of this issue, and I am so grateful to these ladies, and I would like them to stand if they are in the room. So, women that work for the city of Sacramento, that are in that Women's Leadership Group, please stand. Laney? Shirley? Yep. Melissa? These ladies have gone for quite a ride with me over the last few months, as we have really attempted to make meaningful movement on these issues, and I am really proud of them. And just to give you a demonstration of what that means, our first deliverable was that we wanted to promote mentorship and networking opportunities, and we wanted to have educational forums that bridged the gap between private and public sector, and we wanted to include guys. Didn't want it to become something that was just women talking about what isn't happening, but rather an informational opportunity. And we kicked off with a big event last week, which is what the mayor was speaking about, where we invited the McKinsey Group, which is an international company that does this type of analysis, to come in and make a presentation to us. I asked the Women Leadership Group to get, to help me fill this room, and they did. It was beyond capacity. And notable is who was in the room. Lots of city staff, lots of our partners in the community, several of you who are in here today, Senator Richard Pan, Assemblymember Jim Cooper, who took that opportunity to announce his introduction of legislation, Assembly Bill 46, which expands pay equity laws in California to private industries. Supervisor Susan Peters from the county, and also Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Hanson, and Harris all came through. We had department heads from several departments, including the Police Department, one of the areas where we're the most challenged. Every single charter officer was there. Economic Development, the executive directors of our Library Authority and our Housing Agency, there were public safety labor groups in the room to hear about what was happening, and that's just to name a few. But the McKinsey Group went over specifics for what are the areas that impact women's ability to succeed. So, for example, there are six impact zones: leadership, childcare, single motherhood, teen pregnancy, elected representation, and violence against women. And they went through those categories and compared Sacramento to other cities, Sacramento against California, and where we stand in each of those categories. We hold up pretty well, actually. We're really ahead of the curve, again, comparative to most cities, except in one area. And if you look at this council, you could probably guess which one it is, right? Elected representation. Say the same thing I say every time I talk about this. Ladies, some of you need to join me, right? You've got to step out and join this council and find some ways to engage. But that is the area where we fall flattest. It's, by the way, not just the city of Sacramento, it's the whole region. So, when you have an area like Elk Grove that doesn't have a woman on the council--
So when you have an area like Elk Grove that doesn't have a woman on the council, that, that really drags the number down. So that, that is one area that they focused on quite a bit. The next recommendation from the report card was to establish the Office of Organizational Development inside the city of Sacramento. Melissa has already done that. It was something that was cut in budgets many years ago. It's brought back, it now has three employees. They provide City University. This is a big deal, this is what the ladies asked for from the Women's Leadership Group. This was their number-one ask. City University provides opportunities for our city staff to get trainings to become supervisors and managers, workshops on job advancement skills, team building inside of particular departments, and career development opportunities. All of this has already started since September for staff in the city of Sacramento, thanks to your effort, and I think that is a really big deal, and it will continue to grow. The third ask at that time was what our mayor has just referenced, and you never know who's in the room, Mayor, so I like to bring it with me everywhere I go. You all asked for a diversity manager. I asked that that position be an equity and diversity manager so that it includes gender parity beyond just diversity. This is the application or the job announcement. So if any of you think you might be qualified to come help the city of Sacramento by being our diversity and equity manager, or you think you might know who this person should be for the city of Sacramento, please seek this out. It is available on our website, and if you need it from me, I'm more than happy to provide it to you here tonight. But that has already gone out, and as Melissa stated, we hope to have that person onboard by March. That's pretty quick, since this council only directed that to happen about four months ago, and the position's been put together with a lot of input. Everything that the McKinsey Group did for us in a presentation, along with everything I've done on the Gender Report Card and all of the recommendations and the updates on where we are, are available on my website. So if you're thinking, I sure wish I could have been at the McKinsey presentation, we actually recorded it, the live stream is available, you can go on my website and, and be able to pull that up. It's linked from the city's website, if you just go to the city's website and click on, on me, on my webpage, it'll take you there. So where does that take us from here? Action items for tonight. We have two action items for tonight, and then about a half dozen items that we're going to commit to working on and bringing back to this council in the short term, so in the next several months. The first two items, these are the two that are up for a vote tonight. The first is a pay equity resolution, which is in the packet, but here's how it reads, and I will just do a short version here. There's an opportunity to improve employment and advance gender parity across the Sacramento region. And the mayor and council recognize equity in the workforce as a fundamental, as fundamental to ensuring employers and employees maximize their potential, and that the actions of local government contribute to the health and well-being of everyone in Sacramento. Approximately 5,000 employees work in the city of Sac, for the city of Sacramento, and we seek to be a model employer, and we will pursue policies in the interest of effectively empowering employees to address wage disparities. The median annual pay for a woman who holds a full-time job year-round in California is $42,486. The median annual pay for a man in California that holds a full-time job is $50,539. That is an 84-cent discrepancy annually totaling $8,053. We seek to address that. City of Sacramento supports gender initiatives to help close the gender wage gap through the following actions. A, identifying gender equity issues, collecting data internally and understanding the root causes of inequity within the organization. B, implementing best-practice solutions and monitoring their progress, that's critical. And C, sharing best practices and success with other organizations. That's what's in front of us tonight for this council to vote on. The second piece is making the report card an, an annual task for the city of Sacramento and assigning it to the Independent Budget Analyst Office as the lead. This is really important. It can't be because you have one woman on the city council that you get a report card. If, if I suddenly wasn't here, we wouldn't want that effort to end, and we want to make sure that these actions that we take are sustainable and long-term, and that they are a commitment of the city. So handing it over to the independent budget analyst doesn't mean I won't be involved, but it means it won't be reliant on me to succeed, which is important. Those are the two action items in front of us. The ongoing items that, because as the mayor told you, this is the start of a very important dialogue, the ones that we will come back with are the following, and my intention is to ask this body to accept all of these. The first is, and I mentioned this today at Budget and Audit, I'd like to ask for an audit on city boards and commissions, meaning conduct an audit on diversity and gender of the composition of our city appointments to boards and commissions, and bring that back to the Budget and Audit Committee. As Melissa stated, once we have the hired position for the diversity and equity manager, that person is going to need to work in partnerships significantly collaborating with our human resources department, but we're going to want to see them bring on comprehensive training programs for managers that address implicit bias, not just in hiring, but in our evaluations and in our promotion process and in our decision-making. So that will be something that we will come back and ask for, once we have that diversity and equity position in place, to, to then bring the trainings on. And we also want to hire an outside organization to come in and look at all of our application processes to help us identify the implicit bias that may exist in there that we can weed out. We are going to look at AB, this is your favorite, you don't want to stop me here, AB 2404 authored by our very own, the Fair Play Act. We're going to ask our Parks and Recreation Department to collect information in a user-friendly tracking system to make sure that our Parks and Recreation programs are compliant with the Fair Play Act, which is basically Title IX. We want to make sure that young girls and young boys have equal opportunities in terms of our Parks and Rec programs. And then we're going to ask for a Commission on Gender Equity. I know there are several of you here who are very interested in this one. We need to hire the diversity and equity manager first, but this could live in the Independent Budget Analyst Office. We need to have a commission, it needs to be an elected and citizen representation. It has to be a mix so that we can have what we need to implement, what they come up with. But here are the types of things that that commission could look at: pay equity, public-private partnerships, reviewing policies, important programs like college saving plans for every kindergartner in the city of Sacramento, childcare, universal childcare, how we get to universal preschool. So that'll be an item that comes forward after we have the hiring in place. Last couple ones here. We want to do a gender equity web portal. We happen to have, in my humble opinion, the best IT director in the state, in Maria, and I'm going to be asking her to develop a one-stop-shop for information for both current city employees and interested employees on how do I get hired in the city and how do I get involved in that process, that particularly does outreach to groups that are not represented well now in our employment group. And then in coordination with the Women's Leadership Group, we're going to continue on this networking path like we did last week with the McKinsey Group. Our next event will be more of a workshop, hands-on event, and we will do the best we can to include as many people as we can. I would like to publicly thank VSP, who sponsored our event last week, it was a $3,000 sponsorship, and about a two-second phone conversation that they said, absolutely, this is of critical importance to us, which is a big deal because that's the city leading a private entity that is one of the largest employers in our region, and they were in the room, their executive director, CEO, president, was here and made the opening announcements and listened to the whole presentation. So that is how we lead, and Melissa's going to continue to bring us back policies during the year that are important to women. Anti-bullying policy is coming, an update to the sexual harassment policy is coming, which, by the way, was made mandatory by AB 1661, inspired by the city of Sacramento being the first of the local elected groups to say it would be mandatory. My final thought here is that I am incredibly proud of Sacramento. I'm proud of Sacramento's participation in the march. I'm proud of the staff in the city of Sacramento for seeing value in moving this item forward, and I am proud of my, my colleagues on this council for being brave enough to step forward and take these actions and not take them lightly. So, Mayor, once we have public comment and we hear back from everybody else, I would love to have the opportunity to make the motion to move the resolution and the annual report card and the commitment to come back on the other items moving forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Very thorough, and again, my mic's... There it is. Very comprehensive and, and great work. Councilmember Ashby, I know I'll have a couple concluding comments, and I know we've got council members up on the queue, but let us do the public testimony here, and then we'll, we'll go forward.
Okay, so we have about 15 that have signed up to speak on this item, so we'll call three at a time. We'll start with Macworthy, and then Jennifer Manuel, and then Trina Allen. Mac?
People, this diversity is surrogate. That's the word. Diversity now, when we grew up with surrogation, that's the way it worked. Now, after we got everything in the world here as a nationality, plus the homosexuality, they got them in a box. That's all you done. That's all you done, you ain't done nothing. People, I hope free enterprise sees this, I have talked to black women, I don't know where they hear that, but sociology, psychology, and political science, that's all we studied, from 65 up. Look at your colleges. Accounting, business administration, we don't have them. I ask them to get people from other states and bring them in here. And I urge black women, be aware of what you're getting into. The biggest money made here in this by a woman is in the business of yourself. All this stuff about the government don't mean nothing. This is why you can start a training center for every position you have here with a fifth-grade education, and you spend less money, and you might get something done. Because there's no experts. There's no experts in here, in the state government, state office. So be aware of what's going on. Free enterprise people to go. The NAACP, the Urban League, and black, uh, the black people situation here, stay away from it, black people, they are garbage. The NAACP coming here and say this, and they are critical, which we have a protest against the election, still. But that should be a law that you check out each nonprofit that's come through here. And we urge you to tell free enterprise not to get in the bed with the government because we got something coming. You're going back to the sixty movements, Roe versus Wade. Women don't pay child support. We have black men here going to die paying child support.
Jennifer?
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name's Jennifer Manuel, I'm the founder and CEO of Via Consulting Group. We're an executive coaching and leadership development program for women here in the Sacramento region. And I'm also coming here on behalf of Take the Lead Women, which is a national organization dedicated to achieving gender parity across all sectors by 2025. I'd like to commend the efforts of this council, spearheaded by Councilwoman Ashby, on the speed with which you've moved on this topic. As a woman-owned business here in Sacramento, gender equity is important to me on many fronts. It's estimated that over the course of a woman's career, she will lose approximately $431,000 from the gender wage gap alone. And with that money, she could buy a home, put two children through public college, buy over 22,000 gallons of gas, and feed a family of four for 6.4 years. So financials aside, since we all have, you know, nearly half a million dollars lying around, it's more than just the financials. It's a justice issue. When women rise, we all rise. When women are absent, the lack of diversity limits the quality of the thinking and action in departments across our city. I'd like to see a handful of actions that are going to continue from the ones that Councilwoman Ashby has brought up, including a further breakdown of the salary ranges provided in the September report that ensures equal compensation within those ranges, consideration for participation in the Gender Equity Principles Initiative, or a similar assessment across all of our city departments that looks at many of these key drivers. And echoing Councilwoman Ashby's comments during the review of the report card, it's not just enough to say that we're going to close the gap for women, we have to recognize that African-American women and Latina women are already paid less than their Caucasian sisters. And addressing the gender pay gap requires simultaneously addressing a pay gap that exists even more deeply for women of other races and ethnicities.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, Trina? Following Trina is Katie Maple, Christina Servantes, and then Wendy Hoyt.
I'm a feminist. Gender equity and diversity is a fight that I would lay my life on the line for because it already is. However, it is not one I believe this council has yet shown any ability to address. We, the people in this council, need to be talking about the intersectional nature of oppression. As a feminist, I show up and support black women, all women of color, unhoused women, trans women, incarcerated women, poor-as-hell women. If the implementation of progressive policies like gender equity is simplified to mean equal access to an inherently unjust system, in this case, positions in our local government, which is exactly what I'm afraid you're proposing, it isn't progress, it is access to or the defense of privilege, not real radical change. I see this as divisive, hypocritical, and abusive. We need to talk about the history of hypocrisy and abuse in this council's progressive actions. Your people were hurting from housing crash, and instead of creating safe and uplifting policies to mitigate class oppression, you fell at developers' feet and let them steal the land out from under communities of color through gentrification. How has that affected Latina women who make 64 cents to the dollar of their white cis male counterpart? Those same folks pushed out by skyrocketing rents and mortgages become unhoused at unprecedented rates, and instead of meeting their short-term and long-term diverse needs, you criminalize them through your genocidal anti-camping ordinance, making it illegal to sleep or protect yourself from inclement weather. How does that affect unhoused women? Would you feel safe at night? You talk about adding more shelter beds, but local queer and trans activists protest on your doorstep because there is no, zero shelter beds for trans folks in Sacramento. The average lifespan of a black trans woman is 35 years old. Who are you showing up for? This is David Rodriguez, an indigenous activist in Sacramento. You symbolically sign on, sign on to the No Dapple Project as your police arrest him for sleeping on his own land. Please tell me again how water is life, as he says in your filthy jail, and you collude with entities that support the pipeline. What do you say to the mothers and families of Dejean Flannot and Joseph Mann after their babies have been killed by your anti-black police department, and they have seen little transparency and no accountability because the community police commission that you created still has no teeth despite hours of unpaid organizing by black women? Turn your symbolic gestures into actual change in your community, not just in your chambers. That is feminism, that is gender equity.
Thank you very much.
Katie, yes, thank you.
Hi, really happy to be here. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm here as an active community member in my neighborhood association, as vice president of the FemDems of Sacramento, and as a member of the Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, which has prioritized strategies and policies to uplift women and girls in our community. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the entire council for making the study of gender and ethnic diversity a priority in the city. Via this effort and with the recent collaboration of Councilmember Ashby and McKinsey, we are now very aware of the challenges we face in retaining, promoting, and encouraging equitable representation of women in management on boards and commissions and in elected office. It is our charge and responsibility to ensure that we do more with this information than let it sit on a shelf and collect dust. We must seek more data on this topic to truly understand our problem, and we must actively develop and implement policies that drive real change. I thank you for your consideration and leadership in closing the pay gap in Sacramento. Thank you.
Christina?
Good evening. My name is Christina Servantes, and I'm here today representing Cafe, Hispanic State employees as a past president, and who is also part of the Coalition Task Force working with you on this issue. I also came as a person who has experience in equal employment, as an equal employment manager in the state of California for six years, and as a professional state trainer in the area of diversity for the, for 15 years. So I have a lot of background and ideas to share. However, I'm not going to take the time to do it just yet. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate you as our city leaders for taking up such an important item. I'm so very happy that the city of Sacramento is assertively stepping forward to address something that is truly a national, state, and local issue of concern. My only comment for today is that, in the past, it was requested by the Latino Coalition that statistics of women by gender and ethnicity inclusive of all women of color, Latinas, African-Americans, Native Americans, and so forth, be included in all classification and categorical levels, and that equity pay breakdowns also be included. I request this information, please be included as part of the annual report to ensure a thorough and accurate report. Sacramento's diversity is in your hands, and, and we look forward to a vision of success in that vein. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Wendy Hoyt. Following Wendy is Jonathan Villacerto, I believe it is, and then Plachette Robertson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg. I want to thank the council very much for allowing us to speak this night. I want to thank Angelique Ashby, Councilwoman Ashby, for the wonderful forum last night and for bringing forward these resolutions. Thank you for your leadership. And thank you, Mayor. It was a pleasure to hear you in your inaugural address just one month ago champion women, pay equity, and the hiring and the development of... one month ago champion women, pay equity, and the hiring and the development of professional women. It was wonderful to hear. Tonight, what you're about to do is a very important first step, but not just from a justice standpoint, but also because it makes good business sense. National and international research shows, when women and men are both at the table, the solutions are more innovative, and they happen faster. And many communities have really developed very aggressive policies. For example, in a country of Iceland, every board, public or private, has to have 40% of both genders, so that no board could have more than, less than 40% men or less than 40% women. They do that because it's good business, and they learned that because in the recession, the only banks that didn't fail in Iceland were the ones with women CEOs. So they got smart. They got stark and decided to make that a policy. What you're doing tonight's a great step. I would also encourage you to do a few other tangible things. You have an internal City U program or City University program. It'd be great if there was some training for women who are aspiring to get into management. Let's have some programs for them that help them learn how to get into management positions. Let's foster women's groups within the city of Sacramento, and especially for young women and midstream women, women who are just starting out in their careers. And let's have a formal mentoring program for women within the city of Sacramento. The outreach that we heard about earlier is outstanding. I heard a lot about diversity, though, and that's excellent. I would like to also hear more about outreach to women's organizations and women's groups, not just diversity. Thank you very much for your time.
Anderson?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jonathan Villa Vicencio. That was pretty close. Speaking on behalf of myself. In my industry, my boss is a woman, and I am Hispanic. In the vast majority of the rooms we walk into, that is it when it comes to diversity. In 2017, that should be unacceptable. Governor Brown gave a rousing speech this morning about the need to commit, now more than ever, to the progressive course we have set. And I believe that the capital of this great state should take positive steps in that direction. I fully support the proposed efforts of the council on this matter.
Thank you. Thank you for test.
Plachette Robertson. Following Plachette is Kate Carpelo, and then Angela Tilletson.
Good evening, council members. I'm really happy to be here. My name is Plachette Robertson. I'm the CEO of SacCulturalHub.com. We are a media company based out of Sacramento with a 15-year track record and stellar reputation of effective multimedia outreach and education into the urban, Black, and minority communities with a reach of 100,000 online and in print. The most important item that I need you to remember is that inclusion and diversity equals outreach. You can't talk about diversity without saying outreach. The city of Sacramento has acknowledged there is a huge problem with diversity and inclusion in the workplace. I am here to request funding to help the city of Sacramento resolve the big problem you have of informing the Black community about the city's initiative on inclusion and diversity in the city of Sacramento, with specific emphasis on promoting women of color. It's a serious problem of unfairness that the Black urban community is not being reached with information about the city's very critical initiatives. For example, one, Rails Grant Opportunities. Two, Golden One Arena Contracts. SacCulturalHub has never been notified, and to date, we have yet to receive an outreach media contract with the city of Sacramento. Our taxpayer monies are funding these initiatives, and yet we are not even being effectively notified. How do we keep missing these opportunities? The reason why is because the city of Sacramento is not even including the urban, Black, and minority communities in your circles. And that's why diversity equals outreach.
Thank you.
The good news for the city of Sacramento is that SacCulturalHub is requesting to contract with the work city of Sacramento with resolving these issues by, one, providing outreach to the Black urban community to increase awareness about the problem, two...
Okay, Ms. Robertson, your time is up. Thank you. But I want to, but I want to take what you said, because I would like the appropriate city staff to meet with Ms. Robertson. If she's not on the particular outreach list, let's make sure we make that connection tonight here and get started, all right? Please.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Kate?
Hi, I'm Kate Carpelo. Here as a private citizen, but also a member of what we're calling the Sacramento Women's and Girls Advancement Coalition. And I have four points that I want to make. And the first is thank you. I think this is a comprehensive effort, and I strongly support it. And Councilwoman Ashby, particularly your leadership, broad and effective, and Mayor Steinberg as well. A few points about the initiative. I'd like to urge, as my compatriot did from Cafe, that you take on best practice of a formal pay equity study, that that will be from management down to all levels of pay and engagement in the city, and it looks at race and gender, so you can really pinpoint what's going on. And there is a standard methodology out there. Secondly, I'd like to suggest that you continue a very important practice that you already have in place, and I saw that throughout the report card and the materials, is that you report on both race and gender. And what that allows us to do is, because it's so important that we move forward together, is that we understand women and all of their rich diversity, and we understand where there is a need to add gender balance when we're looking at communities of color. And my fourth point is, as important and deeply important as it is to look at issues of representation, we have to remember that we support people of color, we support women, because we have the hope that they will represent their communities. And that means changes in public policy as it relates to childcare, as it relates to women and girls in parks and sports through AB2404 implementation, and through outreach on contracting services in the limits of Proposition 209. So I ask that you add to this effort, not next month, but soon, a broad set of policies that move forward to advance the health, wealth, and power of women. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your leadership, Kate. Appreciate it. Thank you for your leadership.
Angela. Following Angela is Mario Guerrero, and then Rosanna Herbert, and then Pastor Gainsborough.
Good evening, mayor and council. Usually I have speaking points, but I always run out of time before I finish anyway, so I'm gonna wing it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, councilmember Ashby, for your leadership on this. And thank you, gentlemen, and surely for your support of this. I am a firm believer that we all, all of us, we have so much to offer with our diversity, with our different perspectives, our backgrounds, and everything. And it's only when we are welcomed as given equal opportunities, equal dignity, and everything, that we can bring our greatest gifts forward. And I think that, you know, we are a city, that we still have a lot of work. But I know that just in the year that I've been coming here, we've made a lot of progress, and there's a lot of looking to the future. And I just want to say that, right now, nationally, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I know a lot of people are concerned. But I actually am very hopeful, because I've seen my city together. I would come together. I was at the march, and thank you for those of you who were there as well, because I really believe that we are stronger together, and together, we will be formidable. And we're gonna make things happen. So I hope you do approve this resolution, because I think it's a step in the right direction, and we will bring everyone else on board with us, too. Thank you.
Confidently will. Thank you.
Mario?
Good evening, mayor, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I came here on my own, just to support my sisters here tonight. Many of them asked, pleaded for us to come out, and so I wanted to come out and support. As someone that has had limited experience working on diversity and gender equity in my limited spheres, I can tell you that my experience is that diversity and closing the gender gap just doesn't happen. It really takes thoughtful and proactive planning and action, and that's what I see tonight. So I commend you on doing, on taking those steps tonight. Thank you so much.
Rosanna?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the city council. My name is Rosanna Herbert, and it's been a while since I've been out and about, so I'm a little nervous. Okay. I belong to several groups that really care about this issue. The Stonewall Democratic Club, the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, the League of Women Voters. We all care about what happens to the women and girls in this city, because we know that they'll make up half of the leadership in the future. A lot of people have said wonderful things tonight, and I'm not going to take a long time repeating them. I do want to acknowledge and thank Councilwoman Ashby for her excellent leadership in this arena. And I also want to say, I am so pleased that Mayor Steinberg is here to be involved in carrying this initiative forward. And I especially think my councilman, Jay Sheneer, is the biggest feminist man on that council. So let me tell you, I have an inside view. The one thing that I would ask for you to think about for the future, as you're planning the development of downtown, look for a place for childcare. Look for some childcare space that developers might be willing to donate to support the city in this effort, because childcare is one of the most critical issues that women have to face in climbing the ladder to their success. Thank you for your work on this, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thanks a lot, Rosanna.
Pastor Gainsborough. Following the pastor is Pamela Curry, and then the last speaker, Tina Reynolds.
Evening, pastor. Good evening to you. It's good to be here. It is great to see half of the population of Sacramento represented on the city council. I'm looking forward in vision. But I've been coming here almost weekly for two years. It's been wonderful to see the inclusion of Councilwoman Ashby and her input continually. A friend of mine is the state director of all the prisons in California, 105,000 inmates. Very interesting. Let me ask you that are watching, and those are present here today, out of 105,000 inmates in the California prison system, what percentage do you think are women? I've heard some people say 20%, 25%, 30%, 30%. Some people thought 15%, 10%. The actuality of it is, 5,000 out of the 105,000 men, humans, persons that are in the California prison system, 5,000, less than 5% are women. The Hebrew word, when God said, "It is not good for man to dwell alone. I will make him a life mate," but when it says in Genesis 320 that Adam named her Chavah, the Hebrew word there, most of us have never heard this. The Hebrew word for Eve, Chavah in Hebrew, and I know my time is running down, but I want us to remember this. Chavah is the Hebrew word for life. None of us would be alive without women tonight. Women rock. I think women are God's greatest invention other than mankind, and none of us would be alive without them. Let's give them a hand. God bless.
Let the record reflect, the pastor is in favor of the resolution.
Pamela?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Gustava Curry, and I am the founder of a new startup, which is called New City Drivers. And it's a platform for rideshare drivers, Uber and Lyft drivers, to take a more leadership role in this trillion-dollar rideshare economy. I am also a member of Black Women in Technology, and that's a group out of Los Angeles that I helped to build, and we have over 1,000 members. I just finished Hacker Labs. I did their six-week accelerator. I did a, I'm in a six-week, I'm sorry, a nine-week accelerator right now. And I just got accepted to another accelerator. I'm really into accelerators. But anyway, I'm really heavy into technology, and I don't know if a lot of you saw the movie recently, Hidden Figures, that talked about the Black women that were at NASA. That's an amazing movie.
Great, great movie.
Yes, it was amazing. And so the reason why I wanted to come up here is because I wanted to support SacCulturalHub, Plachette. You know, I know a lot of things because I'm in the circle. You know, I'm in Hacker Labs. I know I O Labs. You know, I just basically am in the circle because I'm in the circle. But anyway. And so the point is, is that a lot of African-Americans, they never know anything about, you know, different initiatives that are out there and what's going on. And I'm like, well, why don't you guys know anything? Why aren't you ever at these meetings and things? And so I'm really here to support, you know, Plachette, because we, there's something missing. You know, there's the gap in communication and in outreach into the Black community. And I know that she has over 100,000, you know, people that are actually involved in her print and online. So I just want to support that, and I would like to be a part of the initiatives to support Black women specifically in technology. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tina?
Reynolds, welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and all my council members. I am Tina Reynolds, and I am the owner of Uptown Studios. And I, too, like Pamela... What? It is in your district. Finally, it only took me two years to get in, though. Okay? We could talk about, you owe me a drink, at least. So I'd like to talk about something that started...
Tina, in my office after this one.
Okay. Do you have some tequila there? When I was young, the women's movement started, and I full well expected that we'd be way beyond this. Thank you for moving this forward, and I feel that there's some serious stuff happening. I think that one of the words that I'm embracing and that I want to share with you is badassery. So I have the definition here. Badassery is behavior, characteristics, or actions regarded as formidably impressive. It's not bad. It's very strong. And I'd like to say that badassery starts here, with me. And badassery starts with you. And I think that together, we're going to, we're going to create the change that finally we need. And I also want to say, as with Pamela and Plachette, I know some stuff. I do, I do know some stuff. I have 22 minutes, 22 seconds. I know some stuff that I'm so eager to share with you. When you're ready to form a panel or a board or a commission, and you need knowledgeable people that are female on the panels, I have some connections. I may not be able to be on the panel myself, but I certainly have a good book to make recommendations.
We will always call on you, too.
And thank you. Thank you. You have my number. Call me.
Yes, very well. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, let's move, let us move to the council input now. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be brief. I want to, I want to commend and let Councilwoman Ashby know how proud we are of her as well. She talked about her being proud of us tonight. But we are proud of her for all the efforts that she's done to bring this initiative forward. And we want to let you know that we are proud. We know the work that you've put in. It's evident, evidenced by your report tonight. And we want to let you know we're proud of you, and we want you to keep up the good work, because it's going to pay dividends. And so I just want to let you know that. It is a goal for the city of Sacramento to be a model city, a leader in our region and a leader in the state on diversity and equity. If it's okay with my colleagues, as we bring forth the next initiative on diversity, as we bring that forward on, in February...
Race and ethnicity.
Exactly. I'd like to take the lead in working with Melissa Cheney, the Director of Human Resources, in bringing back the report that will include thoughtful and proactive actions. I got that from one of the speakers tonight. We'll come back to the council with description analysis, policy considerations, economic impact, committee action, rationale for... economic impact, committee action, rationale for recommendation, and a resolution. And we'll come back next month. And then, as we said earlier, we'll come back quarterly to budget and audit, to give an update on what we're doing, and then end that with a full year report, to make sure that everybody, it's fully, a fully transparent process of what we're doing and the progress we're making, and the actions that we're taking. So if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like the mayor to appoint me to work with her. Um, I'll be more than happy to ask anybody else who wants to come on that committee to work with us, but, uh, I am fully committed to making sure that we do the same work for racial and ethnic diversity that we have done with gender equity.
You are officially appointed.
Thank you.
Uh, and, 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 but let's recognize that there's a lot of crossover here too. As, as your report, as Councilmember Ashby's, uh, report indicated, that the problem is even more severe when it comes to African-American women. And so, yes, absolutely take the lead, but I hope that the two task forces, if you will, work together and partner, because that's important. Thank you. Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Steinberg. I appreciate, again, Councilmember Ashby, your great leadership on this effort, and, and may I just say, amazing remarks on, on Saturday morning as well. Um, you know, I think you rocked the house that day, and it was heard loud and clear all over Northern California. Uh, I will go, uh, also want to thank Melissa Chaney and your staff, Latoya Jackson and, uh, and Howard Chan, who came out to the Latino Roundtable and talked about diversity, and the efforts and steps that you guys have been doing, um, on this issue. I want to go back to, uh, our meeting that we had about four months ago, when we first started talking about, uh, diversity with the, uh, the audit that Jose Segura put together. And, um, and go back and look at a couple of the, the things that we had heard from the Latino community, uh, from United Latinos, from CAFE, the Cruz Yonoso Bar Association, Latino Center for Arts and Culture, uh, on this. And one, I think it was developing a strategic and tactical plan to address, uh, the major issues of underrepresentation. And I think we're, we're moving in that, that piece here today. Um, assign responsibility for daily implementation and management, uh, of this plan as it goes forward. Melissa, thank you. I, I know that that was a, a major effort, and now you've, have taken that on, uh, significantly, even more so. The development of a selection, uh, of a selection manual that is compliant with Uniform Guidelines on Employee Selection. So I think that's an area where I think we still need to work, work on, and I'd like to work with, uh, with, uh, Councilmember Jennings on that issue, um, on the diversity issue. Uh, also, uh, one of the key things that was brought up at the, at that meeting, that I'd like to make sure that we not forget, uh, and I think the stakeholder group had mentioned this to you, is the composition of interview panels. And if the interview panels are not diverse in themselves, then, then it's already an, uh, a, a barrier, or could, we could have implicit bias to making sure that we have a diverse perspective of who we're hiring and who we're promoting. So I want to make sure that we don't forget, uh, the point that was brought up about, uh, the interview panels. Uh, I think that the, one of the recommendations that we should consider first here was a quarterly employment reporting as we're producing the, uh, the guidelines. I think an annual reporting is appropriate, but in the timeframe that we're developing the guidelines, it's, it's probably faster for, as a council, reviewing changes, uh, as we're developing them, and then once we get a good policy, I think an annual report would be appropriate, but I, I go back to one of the recommendations there. And in that, um, recommendation, they also, uh, and I think Caroline Cabias, uh, who, I was here with Christina Cervantes, who couldn't be here today because she's a speaker at the Women's in Public Policy and Administration event tonight, uh, recommended, and at that meeting, she also wanted to ensure that we were including data on women of color to, and the reason the progress reporting was important is, is to make sure to see if we were making those adjustments as soon as possible. So I want to just close off by saying that, um, one, uh, I think we're, we're making a fantastic move. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for making sure that this is also kept on the agenda. Uh, two, uh, we can't forget the, that when we looked at all the demographic numbers, uh, the diversity on women of color was the most significant. I think that is a, a big key piece. And on a personal note, uh, I think the childcare issue doesn't get enough attention. And if I think back about the, the challenges that, that, that I had in my life, and my mother had in her life, is that she, we had to follow her to work in the fields as, as kids, because there wasn't any safe childcare. And in communities where you have to have two-income households to, to make ends meet, and we see that more with the, with the, uh, wage gaps, I think childcare, more than ever, how we figure out zoning, how we figure out planning, how we make sure that we're assisting in those spaces, is going to be critical in the long run. With that, Mr. Mayor, I want to participate on the diversity panel here.
Yeah.
And want to thank, again, all our staff for going out there and being very active and meeting with the, uh, the Latino Roundtable and all the stakeholders on, uh, the implementation of, uh, these policies.
Thank you, Councilmember. Angela Hansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say, there is an impressive group of women in the room tonight. As I look around, there are women literally from the front lines of every movement in Sacramento, whether it's neighborhood leaders, business leaders, leaders of our city, um, and I, and I see people from the arts community, I see people from, uh, the League of Women Voters. I think it's just amazing how many people you've brought together, Councilmember Ashby. And the forum last week was only a prelude to the Women's March on Saturday. We had this room packed, I mean, you had this room packed, but this room was packed with people really interested in how we not only lean in, but show accomplishments and measure those accomplishments, because those are the things that I'm also hearing is, we know that we want to make progress, but we want to measure that progress and have results. And I think that you're going to help us drive to results, because one of the other things that's very clear is the future is female. I think that Saturday, um, I was just in such awe, I, I couldn't wheel all the way up to the front to hear you speak, but seeing, um, a crowd so animated and so committed to changing our country has to start not only in places like this chamber last Tuesday, where you had your forum, but, and on the streets, but also through actions like tonight. And I just want to say thank you for your leadership, and to all of you out here who are helping to lead the way in every aspect of our city. Um, I also just wanted to chat for a second about, um, as we've gone through this, there's no doubt we have to make progress on gender and racial, racial and ethnic diversity, but I've talked time to, from, from time to time about LGBT folks. And, um, we have one LGBT city council member ever elected, and it's a burden that I feel very strongly. And when I first got here, I didn't really know that we had any LGBT staff, because we didn't have an LGBT staff group, and I believe we still don't. We did at one point have an LGBT director of a department who retired, uh, but I, I think that, that the brochure that you held up, it talks about those issues, and I just want to make sure that as we move the city along, particularly if you look at the, the employment issues and some of the other inherent discrimination faced by the LGBT community, people of color who are LGBT face significant burdens, but particularly trans people of color face really steep hills. And I think that, um, as we report, it shouldn't take a lot of extra work, but we should try to document who we have in our city staff and our city commissions that are also LGBT. Um, and I think the Diversity Equity Manager can help with that. And I was really pleased to see in the brochure the rainbow crosswalk from Midtown. Um, and I'll just finish by saying, we always think these things are easy, but I think inherently, whenever we try to do them, we realize that they're not. That crosswalk was not easy. It took us two years, and we had people who said we shouldn't do it because it would separate people, we shouldn't do it because it would send the wrong message. But we did it, and guess what? Now everybody wants to take a selfie there. And if our city can persevere through these challenges, this is a city where everybody will want to take a selfie, because it will be the coolest, most unique, and forward-thinking city in the state.
Very good. Thank you. Steve, Councilmember Sheneer.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll also be brief, but, uh, just want to make a couple of points here, and I want to congratulate my colleague, Ms. Ashby, over there. Um, I, I think what you're doing is great, it's really important. You know, Wendy Hoyt said this makes good, oh, and Rosanna, thank you also, I appreciate that. Wendy Hoyt said this makes good business sense, which I think it does, and I think that's a piece of the puzzle. Um, and for me, as a, I get it, as a business owner, I have about 30 employees, and three-quarters of them are women, including our highest-paid employees, um, because they're really good. And I do think that we need to, to understand each other and where we're coming from, and that's going to help us all be successful. But I, I think more importantly than the business part of this, it will just make us a better city. If we have the diversity within our ranks at this dais, which will come, I am sure, within our employees, within our committees, um, as we reflect better who, who we are as a member of the community, we'll understand the needs and desires and wants of the community better. And we'll also understand how to get there, and what we need to do to be successful with them. Um, it's that simple, and, and it's very difficult, as Mr. Hanson said, it's, it's not an easy task. I think the fact that we've devoted, um, a good chunk of time tonight, that our staffs are devoting time on their own and, in their jobs to this, um, and that you will have a unanimous council, I'm quite sure, as we pass this resolution and take the next step, those are all things that will lead us to be a model in this country, both in the state and this country. And we're, we're heading into some very difficult times, as we all know, um, when we look nationally at what's happening, and, um, I mean, I, I've, I've never been prouder of Sacramento than seeing 25,000 people on, uh, on Saturday. I think we need to up it a little bit. One of my kids was in DC with 500,000, and the other one was in Seattle with 175,000, so we've got to try just a little bit harder, but I, I know that, um, I know that we'll get there. So, again, I, I think, and, and Angelique, I don't think this is about getting zero resistance, I think this is about getting wholehearted support from this council to do this work. And that's where we are, and, um, I'm ready to vote as soon as you guys are.
Deal. Thank you, Jay. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Steinberg. You know, more than half of my constituents are women, and, um, believe me, I pay attention to that. These are real issues, very important issues. We have to close the wage gap. Equal pay for equal work is so, so important. Uh, I grew up, you know, in the 50s, and my mother struggled with that her whole life. And, uh, we've made progress, but not enough. I would also like to lodge your work, Angelique. I think you've done a good thing for the city. Uh, you've reflected very well on the council, and indeed, that Women's March was something very extraordinary. I thank everybody who participated, it was wonderful. And these actually were brief remarks.
I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Ashby to, of course, make the motion. I think it should be seconded by Councilmember Vice Mayor Jennings, by the way. Um, and, uh, I, I just, uh, echo all the plaudits and, and the importance of this work. I want to only add one thing in terms of next steps or, or further steps, and that is, we tend to focus on inputs, all of the things that we have to do to change the result that, to affect the result that we want to see. And that's really important. We've heard it, a lot of it tonight, whether it's, uh, interview panels, childcare, so many important ideas that are all affecting the resolution. And I know that Prop 209 always lingers out there, but there is no reason why we cannot make part of our effort here to articulate goals and timetables, especially around hiring and contracting. Because we have to measure ourselves against, uh, actual progress and end results. Some, some things are more intangible, but hiring and contracting, we can measure over time. So I, I would ask and hope that, and I know that everyone would be supportive of, that that be added into our, if we're having problems communicating on the contracting side, for example, to, uh, women-owned businesses, then what are, are we increasing our percentages over time in terms of contracting with women-owned businesses? The percentages that Councilmember Ashby laid out in terms of higher-end management positions in the city, and the very low percentage of women that are in those positions, where do we want to get? I think we know where we want to get to. Are we going to measure ourselves over time and make that part of our mission? So I just want to ensure that we're focused not only on the numerous inputs that we need to change this, but also on the outcome that we want to see. Angelique, final word.
Can I go before you?
Oh, Larry, let Larry Carr go, go next, so you can have the final word.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Mayor. We have to define what results we want and make sure we, as a council, monitor those results on a continuing basis. But just as critical, and even more critical, is something we haven't mentioned, I know we're hiring a diversity officer, but that can't be the person responsible for making sure that this happens. To institutionalize it, first we must have the policy, then we must hold our city manager accountable, he holds his department heads accountable, and each supervisor then becomes accountable for making sure that their section is in compliance with the policy. If we have just a diversity officer, and that doesn't happen, this will fail, because the diversity officer will be the guy that walks around bugging staff, and staff won't have any buy-in. So the motion that, uh, Mr. Jennings made to be on the committee to develop the policy, to marry both of these together, both the ethnic diversity and the gender diversity, and to come back with a policy that produces a result that holds supervisors responsible for their individual sections, is what will make this work.
Absolutely. Good comments. Thank you. Last word, Councilmember Ashby, and a motion, seconded already by Vice Mayor Jennings, and then we will vote.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say how happy it makes my heart to hear baby sounds in the background of the entire conversation.
Yeah. It's a great, it's a great thing.
I'm so you, usually, so thanks for bringing the baby, I love it. And the little ones that are in the audience, I will share with you, childcare is an issue. I mean, we've had changes here before with urgent meetings, and I can tell you, we took an urgent meeting one time on a flood control board, and my then-five-year-old son was under the dais, because I'm like, I'm not missing the vote. So he was right under by my legs, and people didn't know it. So I know we, I know we are innovative in finding solutions to make sure that we can participate in those important discussions, and I want to make it as easy as we can. So yeah, childcare is a big deal, uh, and the, the babies are always welcome here. Councilmember Jennings, you have my 100% support and partnership. We're a good team, we've been charged with lots of, uh, efforts over the last few years together, and I think we've produced some pretty good results. I have no doubt we can, we can do it again. Um, I'm adamant, though, about always talking about equity separate from diversity, because inside of equity, the people who have a diversity issue deserve 100% of that attention as well. So, but we can put them together and work together on our efforts, but I, if we're really going to drill down on how we get to minorities inside of the classification of equity of women, they deserve their own committees, commissions, and look, and I will, I will stay committed to that. And, Mayor, happy to add, goals. I think that's an, an important component, although I was thinking, what would Ruth Bader say? And she would say, when she was asked what percentage of the Supreme Court needs to be female for you to be happy, and she said, 100%? Not that I don't want to work with all of you, um, but, I'm just saying, I think 50% is an obvious goal on these things. We, we want this, not just this council, but the employment base in this city to really accurately represent our city. And our city is a majority women. It's 50% plus some ladies, and we're not close. So it, we will, let's put out some very specific measurables and some milestones to those measurables.
Time tables as well.
Yeah, so that we can measure against them, and timetables are important too. And I, and I heard Councilmember Garrett say he'd like quarterly updates, and I think that's important too. Uh, my commitment to the people in the audience, and there are some badassery women in this audience, there's, there are at least two, maybe more recipients of the Women Who Mean Business Award, sort of the top women in business award in the city of Sacramento, and multiple leaders that just take this on, Tracy and folks, every single day. I want you to know, I'm, I'm open to your input, so any of you who came forward today and you had something specific that you were asking of us, if you send me- you had something specific that you were asking of us, if you send me an email, that would be really helpful. The folks who had in the Culture Hub, and Jennifer, you said—you rattled something really specific about a federal effort to sign on to. Send it to me. Katie, you've done a great job, and Tina, sending me all the things, and Kate, I appreciate. I've tried to incorporate some of it in here, and I will continue to do so forward. Councilmember Hanson, LGBT community is incredibly important to the city of Sacramento. I make a commitment to you to include that in everything that we do moving forward as well. And I promised Councilmember Warren that I would, because he couldn't be here tonight, but he did call me to say, make sure folks know that I am one-hundred percent with you, and this is an important issue for him as well. So, all of that being said, thank you so much to my colleagues for all of the encouragement and enthusiasm, but really, it is about deliverables and outcomes, and I want to make sure we get there. So happy to move the item tonight, and thank you for the second, Vice Mayor Jennings.
Very good. Thank you all, members of the public, for your patience and for being here and participation. I hope you feel the passion and the sincerity of your elected officials and our commitment to continue this work over the long term. All those in favor of Councilmember Ashby's motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. The motion passes eight to nothing. Thank you. Congratulations. Great work. Okay, we now move to public comment. That's our last item on the agenda that needs to be discussed. We do have—we do have public comment. And let's go.
Okay, so we have about twenty that have signed up to speak. We'll call three at a time. We'll start with Wanda Cleveland. Wanda. Then we have Trina Allen, and then we have Eric Schmueluski, I believe it is.
Again, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. This morning, I was over at the Board of Supervisors, and I was very impressed with what they were doing. They've been working over the last seven months on the homeless issue. And one of the things that they are talking about is getting a—I can't remember what it's called now—a senator started so that we can get a triage, triage. And that's something that we've been asking for years. It was a different place there. We were all were respected, I felt, and we were all given three minutes. We all had plenty of time to talk. No one ever got interrupted or thrown out because of their—how they felt. I think that this forum should take some real look at the Board of Supervisors and how they treat their people that come to put their input in this. And I'm all for the women's equity, but can we have some equity on these homeless people? They're important to our lives also. They're—they're—we've had two people die, I think, in this last week. One was a sixty-five-year-old man, and one was a lady over on Broadway. She froze to death. After they were taken, their camping paraphernalia kept—taken from the—by the police department. It's got to stop. Why can't we get a moratorium on the anti-camping law temporarily so that we can get some help for these guys and support them in what they need? You know, this is ju—it doesn't—it's a no-brainer to me. I was homeless in nineteen-eight eighty-nine. I worked myself out of that into a full-time position at a job, several jobs. I raised three children.
Thank you.
And, excuse me.
No.
Excuse me. And I think it's time for this—this board—that—you know, when we went over at the Board of Supervisors, they weren't rude like that, Mr. Steinberg. They understood that we had something to say, and they let us say it.
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Right now?
My time will never be up with you.
It's nice to see a mayor here at—during a public comment. I'm kind of like floored. On April eighth, Dejean Jerome Flinot was in need of our care. I say "our" care, because when one of our community members is scared alone and needing of support, as a Sacramento community, we are called upon to respond, to respond with compassion, to respond with culturally competent, trauma-informed care, to respond with resources and a better answer to questions of mental health, illness, and homelessness than bullets in a man's body. Dejean committed no crime. He was unarmed. He said he was lost. He said he was looking for the pearly gates. He showed zero aggression, only disorientation. Your Sacramento PD responded by putting him in the back of a police car, shutting the door, and walking away. This is the definition of state violence. By illegally detaining Dejean and having no racial lens in what being locked in a police car may mean to a black man experiencing homelessness, Sacramento PD's displayed their racial and economic bias. He was deemed a threat and criminalized when all he needed was mental health care. The carry did not get directly led to the deterioration in his state of mind and dramatic increase in erratic behavior. When they opened the door upon hearing his screams, he ran, tried to get help from neighbors, hid in bushes, and frantically searched for protection. He was in fight-or-flight panic. He feared for his life. He thought they were going to kill him. He thought they were going to hurt him. He thought he was being hunted. He was right. His vulnerability in that moment should bring you to tears and unfortunately did not move SacPD towards compassion. SacPD to Dejean Flinot, "What are you doing, you freak?" SacPD to a community member, "There's some nut, tweak, just freaking out. He's back there somewhere. If you see him, just hit him with a baseball bat a couple of times. That will mellow him out." At the time, he was unarmed. We lost Dejean to their relentless bullets, their inexcusably poor judgment, their assumptions about the dangerousness of his black face. Now, we must change our community response. Mayor Steinberg, I have several asks of you. One, please become a driving force in pushing this council and community forward by providing our Sacramento Community Police Commission with investigative, subpoena, and disciplinary power. If you don't currently have the power to do so, then create the policy or support a ballot measure so you can. Two, we need the police report, autopsy report, witness statements, and forensic evidence to all be made available to the family and to the public. Chopped-up video clips do not speak truth.
Time is up. Thank you.
Three, I have one more really quick.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We need to end the anti-camping ordinance. Dejean had been previously targeted by law enforcement, and it clearly worsened his mental health. If we understand gentrification and its anti-black imperialism—and I do—then we expect to see disproportionate numbers of unhoused folks of color. The ordinance is not only cruel, it is racist.
Made your point. Thank you very much.
Following Eric is Mac Worthy, and then Amy Guyer.
All right, I would just like to say shame. Shame for you. Shame for you, you, you. I've seen ego stroking. I've seen shameless self-promotion. That is dishonorable. It is sickening to know that you are what is representing the mass public. You don't represent shit other than yourself.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
Not going to tolerate that language.
I apologize. I am passionate. So, what should be done? Why don't you put the cameras on the cops, so that we have the knowledge, that we are allowed to know of what they are doing? Why can't we have cop—cop cameras? Why? Why can't homeless have a safe place to sleep? Why can't the mentally challenged be housed safely? Because you cut it? You cut the funds for the mental institutions? For what, for a arena? Well, let me reverberate. Let these words reverberate with you. This is a poem by me. It's like raking with a shovel. This is a conscious mind puzzle. If a bear poops in the woods, does it make a sound? While I look around, I see no wilderness, no pine trees for pine boxes. It's eco-slaughter with trees being the cannon fodder. It's like eating tabs of blotter. I've heard there's poison in the water, poison baptisms in all the river systems. These metal-on-concrete stories that soar in—metal-on-concrete that soars into a hundred-story fleets. The Tower of Babel longs at singing no god's song. Now, let's waddle along to a Pied Piper synthetic beat, beat, beat. Stay in line, repeat it from all the staple bell tower keeps. No reason for allorin when mutes lead cattle.
Thank you.
Mac?
I got twenty-four seconds. I'm going to continue. No reason for allorin when mutes lead cattle, because all the street signs shine bright like neon flares with a slogan, "Stay in line." Cameras on cops, boom. Mentally challenged people, boom, facilitate them. Come on. What if it was you? What if you were them?
Now, your time is up.
What if it was you?
Appreciate it. Now, your time is up.
And you go home and eat your steak dinners and get in your 2018 Benz?
Excuse me, your time—your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Know who paid for it?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mentally challenged.
Next speaker.
The fucking people.
Mac? Following Mac is Amy Guyer.
If you're seventy years old and older, we heard the same thing six to movement we hear here tonight. A lie. Black folks don't take that garbage because it's on their premise. Economics is the only way you get out of this hole, black folks. All the stuff that virtually employed, you can't do nothing but employ it by government because you're controlled. You're in there and out. So let's don't take—let's don't accept that. Go your own way. We wouldn't even have this here tonight. The way it started off with housing, then into women, that's because my friend Trump become president. I called it in here, and I'm going to call something here tonight. Biased employment. You have your manager in place, and you have your chief of police department in place. Why are you spending the money on the garbage? You cover it up for the real fact that you will always be a biased city in employment.
Next.
Amy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I apologize for any disruption that we've caused.
Oh, you get—you get four minutes.
I want to thank those of you who participated in Saturday's events. It was amazing to see you all there. I want to thank Councilwoman for acknowledging the challenges that women face. And I want to thank Congressman Hanson for being a zag. Go Zags. I'm also very glad to see the council considering using electric vehicles for garbage recycling pickup. This is a step in the right direction, and it's along the lines of what I'd like to talk to you about tonight. I would like for you to consider implementing weekly recycling pickup. With all of the actions that have been taken nationally against climate change, we need to take action. The state of California has set a goal of seventy-five percent recycling composting and source reduction of solid waste by 2020, and Sacramento is one of—is the only of the top ten most populous cities in California to not provide weekly pickup. This is abominable. We, as the capital city, have a responsibility to lead by example and to do what is right for the environment and keep the earth healthy for those who will come after us. Visual aid one. I am aware that residents can pay for a second can, but many of us do not have the space to store this on our small lots. We also are responsible to making sure that all citizens have access to this. Weekly recycling is a very small step, but is an important step, and I thank you for considering it. And since I have fourteen seconds left, please also consider putting changing tables in the bathrooms here. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you so much, and thank you for—beautiful—beautiful baby.
Lorraine Brown is next, and then John Saunders and Donna Delgado.
Well, I'm Lorraine Brown. I'm a psychologist, and all professional people are trained on diversity and cultural sensitivity and fairness, fair practice issues, and we're trained in leadership. I find it very disconcerting that I—because I have different opinions than some of the Democrats in this room that said we're going to face hard times. We have been facing hard times. People have been attesting to that. I've been back here twelve years. Horrible, horrible mismanagement, misappropriation of funds, cruelty, brutality, indifference, apathy, reluctance. The hard times are, our law says, equal opportunity for everyone. We don't have to be black or gay or white or yellow or green or female or male. Equal opportunity. Our law already addresses these issues. Do not use it as a political ploy. It sounds like you're trying to mobilize a political action committee here. It's reprehensible. You're not going to get away with it.
Next.
John?
Good evening. My name is John Saunders. I have been a resident of Sacramento since my birth, and God willing, I will be until my death. I live in District Number Four, in the heart of the city, and I am here tonight on behalf of No Dapple to urge the city of Sacramento to—to divest from the financial institutions that are in bed with the Dapple project.
Excuse me. Let the witness testify, please. I can't hear. Go ahead.
My father always told me that money talks and cow pies walk. And we need to put our money where our mouth is. The city council has already made a show of solidarity, and it's time to solidify that solidarity and divest ourselves and get out of bed with corrupt and unconscionable institutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Donna?
Hi. I, first of all, want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having us here tonight and allowing us to speak.
Your chamber.
We just are very honored to have the city council on our—on our side. I'm here representing No Dapple Sacramento. And being a Sacramento native, born and raised here for fifty years, and I am Apache Indian from my mother's side, born and raised on the reservation there, and I just really urge you to try and find ways to divest your interest in any banking and urge people to de-invest their interest in banking. Also, if you could also reach out to our president-elect, Donald Trump, and possibly send him a letter and on our behalf. I would really appreciate that. We would all appreciate that. We're fighting the fight to protect our water and our land for all of us, for my children and my children's children and future generations to come.
Just so you know, mayors throughout the country—and I took part in this last week, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, especially on—those who are opposed to many of President Trump's policies—are organizing so that we have a collective voice with the administration. And so I promise you, as you saw last Saturday in Sacramento—
Yes.
—with the march, we—our voices will be heard in Washington and elsewhere on these issues and other issues. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next.
Our next speaker, then, is Mary Tappel. Following Mary is Pastor Gainsborough, and then Arthur—
Can I ask a question to this group?
Yes, yes.
With the gentleman who wants us to divest, would he come back?
You would.
Do you know which companies you were talking about that we should divest in?
Wells Fargo, B of A, the major mega-banks that are—Chase—
There's thirty-eight banks that are—
We have a list.
—in the pipeline. The major ones are Wells Fargo, HSBC, Citibank, Chase, US Bank. So if the—there's thirty-eight of them. I could send you a link to—the list of them.
We can find them if it's just the banks. We already divested in Wells Fargo.
Okay. So if you're doing any other business with any banks, we encourage you to divest. And if you personally bank with Wells Fargo, please—or any of those banks, we ask you to divest as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on, please.
Mary?
Hello, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. Thank you for your actions for the city, your initiatives lately. It's very encouraging. And I'm—I'm coming in to tell you about the situation along the city's Two Rivers Trail. There's way too much garbage that's not being picked up or hauled off very near illegal camps. And this is the—this is a grant program. It was a $2 million Parks Bond Grant Program. There's many conservations, thousands across the state, who worked to get that on the ballot, and it passed very, very easily. the state who worked to get that on the ballot, and it passed very, very easily. People wanted to have environmental justice and combined with social justice for, for parkways and parks in cities, particularly in lower income areas. This is one of those projects, and it has been, been one of, one of the nice areas when it's, when it's not trashed out. And this needs to be addressed. We also have a lot of unemployed and underemployed youth. We had our own city parks and rec department cleanup along the North Sacramento Bike Trail. This could be done also for the, this area along the city's Two Rivers Trail. This is the area that, the areas that potentially, this area that's specifically dumped on a lot right now is on both sides of the levee, the land side and the water side, and it's between the I-5 overpass on the south bank of the river, from the I-5 overpass Discovery Park to Scornia Park, along where the garbage particularly is concentrated, it's from the North Sacramento, the North 10th Street entrance to the Parkway, to the 12th Street Bridge. I'll just very quickly show you some more of the pictures.
You can, we're, we're running out of time here.
Okay.
We've got, it's been a long night.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, but come back and we'll continue.
Well, please, please look into getting that garbage removed for everybody's sake.
Okay. Staff, look into that, please. Appreciate that.
Pastor Gainsborough? After the pastor is Arthur Ringwald, and then it'll be Fago, and then Mary Zeiser.
Mayor and council, the word for tonight is the word triage. Triage. Why is a triage center necessary? Why is a 24/7, 365 triage center necessary in Sacramento? Why is a triage center necessary at the front end of the continuum of care? All of the 20 or 30 organizations, Volunteers of America Salvation Army, Women Exploited by Violence, on and on, wonderful organizations, but like a hospital without an emergency room. I repeat, like a hospital without an emergency room. All of the organizations currently don't have an entry point, a focused entry point, a 365, 24/7 triage center, adequate with enough beds to be able to be a command center to then resource people to the other organizations. 245 acres in the rail yard. Some of that needs to be dedicated to put Sacramento on the cutting edge of innovation as an inspiration nationally with a 24/7, 365 triage center. Sacramento Steps Forward does not answer the phone when you call. They will not answer the phone. They say they don't have enough staff, although a budget of $10 million, most of it HUD money, a million or two of Sacramento's financed. The 211 number, when you call it 24/7, has no transportation. For the elderly lady that I bought dinner for several months ago at 11:00 at night, they, they refer her to someplace she could never get to. 20 navigators for Sacramento Steps Forward are homeless. They work with the homeless, but they have no home, no central place to bring people to, a triage center. We need a central field hospital.
Thank you, Pastor.
In every crisis, a command center is established, and I believe a triage center will be established in Sacramento to help solve the homeless situation.
So I'm only gonna make one comment, we're not debating here. Completely agree with the need for a triage center, multiple triage centers. But triage centers without permanent housing are triage centers referring people to nowhere. And so appreciate you getting focused on the triage center, which is an essential component. But we need to build an inventory of, excuse me, permanent.
But the.
Excuse me, would the officer please remove the people who are disrupting the meeting here? See ya.
I'm listening.
Thank you. We need both. And next Tuesday, joint meeting between the city and city council and the county board of supervisors, we will be discussing and taking action on at least one of the items to create an inventory of permanent housing. So I urge you to attend that meeting.
Excellent. I will be there. God bless.
Okay.
Okay, Arthur?
Next.
My name is Arthur Ringwald, and I have met, I'm a resident of Riverview Plaza, 600 I Street. And Mayor Steinberg, wasn't mayor then, the Mayor Steinberg and Mr. Hanson came to visit us. And Mayor Steinberg said, I told him how much, I didn't like living at Riverview Plaza because I had to pay $185 a month for parking. I still have to pay $185 a month for parking. And Mayor Steinberg said he would do something about it, but nothing has happened. And also, Mr. Hanson was also there. This was on the 15th floor, 15th floor of Riverview Plaza. And further to say again, I have, the reason I live there is because I'm an adult with autism, so life is very difficult, but I have to have a car, and I have no place to park, have to have a car because I'm a substitute teacher. If you're a substitute teacher, if you're a substitute teacher, you must have a car. So anyway, I just wanted to say that maybe people who move into Riverview Plaza should be warned that before they move into Riverview Plaza, maybe you could tell that's S-H-R-A, Sacramento Housing and Development Authority, that maybe people should be warned that parking in the city is very expensive, and because of the Kings, can't afford to go to see any basketball games, but you gotta pay more because of parking. So, and also, we also put up a lot of noise. So anyway, I just want to say that, I want to say it again, that I want to, the people should be told to the cost of parking, and just as a side, a homeless person who is kind of insane and she has an umbrella, she's no longer there. I don't know what happened to her. She was arrested about a few weeks ago, and I appreciate somebody, hope somebody's helping her.
We're gonna ask Assistant City Manager Fran Hoboken to talk to you. I know Councilmember Hanson has worked to get you higher up the list, but let's intensify our effort here and see what we can do to help you, okay, sir?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
Next.
Okay, James Clark, and then Mary Zeiser.
Okay. So, a week before Michael Nunez died, there was another, it was an African-American lady, she froze to death over off Broadway in Stockton. Her name was Natasha. She was severely mentally, mentally ill, but there's no help for her in Sacramento. And then, to bring back to last week, Michael Nunez. I brought up last week that there were raids going on Monday, and doing my investigations, I discovered that he was a victim of those raids on Monday. His tent, his sleeping bags, his gear was confiscated. The night that he died, all he had was a thin blanket that another homeless person gave to him because that's all they could afford to give him. So this camping ordinance has caused death in our city of Sacramento.
I'm not gonna, excuse me, you're not gonna take away from.
Are you gonna stop my time?
Not gonna take away from your time. Stop the clock. We're not gonna have people shouting out. We're not gonna run meetings this way. The gentleman we're respecting, the gentleman's opportunity to speak, we're attentive and we're listening. We're not gonna have people shouting out. That's the way it is. Continue, please.
So, and for the last 30 years, every single mayor that has one office has said, we'll create housing. We'll create housing. Well, 30 years later, there's more people living on the streets, rent has gone up, a triage center's not even an option until there's housing, camping ordinance isn't an option until there's housing. So basically, people are gonna continue dying because of your ordinance until there's housing, and you expect us to believe you 30 years later after we continue hearing the same BS policies, which by the way, badassery is still swearing too. Just so you know, since I can hold my tongue and not swear. I'm seeing this council pretty much is as murderers right now, because your ordinance has cost life. Your ordinance caused an individual who was struggling to survive on these streets, the property that he needed to stay alive, and that has caused his death. And then another individual that has severe mental health issues, you can't even get a triage, you don't even want to support the triage center to help people like that until there's enough housing. I don't think you really mean that you care about housing. You're raising rents on everybody, people, more people are becoming homeless, and you're basically just lying to the public again. If you want to prove to us that you actually mean even half of what you say, repeal the camping ordinance and show that you give a fuck about the people.
Hey, wait, wait. Once again, once again, you are out of, you are out of the council for the next meeting. We're not gonna have, you're not gonna testify at the next meeting. I'm not going to have people come into these chambers and use profanity. There's going to be a standard of conduct here. We are sitting here patiently, and we are, excuse me, excuse me, we are going, and, and we are listening, and we are intending to take all kinds of actions, beside the point. There is, there needs to be a model of civility that is practiced between colleagues. Excuse me, it is here. We're not gonna have people use profanity in these chambers. And so you can come back, the meeting after next, and testify. You're not going to testify at the next meeting. Next.
Mary?
Fine, you will not testify. Go ahead.
Mary Zeiser? Is Mary here? No Mary? Tyler Hoff. Thank you, Tyler.
Come on up.
I do care about the public, Fago. I got your back. My name's Tyler Houghton. It didn't make it all the way out, just figured I'd say it for the record. It's two major factors affecting people over 30, people under 30. Under 30, climate change, right? We have a president that says climate change is a hoax. Mayor, you're saying that you're organizing to help the president understand the error or the illogical thinking of saying that climate change is a, you know, Chinese hoax?
Yes.
I just compel you to bring that up in that moment, you know? Just make sure that climate change is not a hoax, because we have scientists around the world, more, you know, like, the United States is the only country in the world that doesn't believe in climate change as a thing. In Peru, in Syria, there is mass drought. We're going to be seeing climate refugees. This is, it's a thing. The second thing, people over 30, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I, I love all the work that you all are doing. I'm a non-gender conformist. I don't represent with male, I don't represent with female, I don't represent transgender, I don't represent with any of these, and I just give you this word, as, you know, I would say homie, right, but as ally, because I understand what diversity and inclusion is, and I know that it is a constant work, internal work. You can't have diversity and inclusion until you fully understand where you stand in the moment, how you come to the space, right? The ladies that were here earlier speaking of the gap between, what is it, outreach and whatnot, that gap is internal investigation, you know? The last note I have, the Women's Climate March, or the Women's Climate March, the Women's March on Washington, mainstream, we all wore pink hats, right, to represent, you know, the, be politically correct, the pink vagina, right? Not all women have pink vaginas. Thank you.
Sorry, my mic was off. David Andre. Following David is, I think it says Braden Murphy.
Hi. While Fago was talking a little while ago, I yelled out the word murder, because I believe that's what it is. I feel a moral imperative to do my best in speaking before you, that, I'm gonna give you an analogy. If we're all in a lifeboat right now, we're in a lifeboat, we have our life vests on, and in the middle of the night, I come up to you and I snag your life vest, and I keep it. Maybe I throw it away, maybe I eat it, and before the storm's over and before we're rescued, you drown. Am I a murderer? Because that's what I'd like to see Chief Louie answer. If we're still directing the police department to take survival gear from people before they're rescued, is that not murder? Michael Nunez, the latest I heard, was on Monday, his survival gear was taken. On Wednesday, he died over here. That sounds like murder to me. This needs to be addressed. This isn't funny. These are people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Braden Murphy?
Should I go to the side here?
Neil, can you assist with the, thank you, with the handheld?
I'm a professional poker player, or previous professional poker player. I've played at the highest levels of poker with the top players in the world, and a huge part of my life has been dedicated to how to find out when people are telling me the truth. And Mayor Steinberg, I am really worried that you're bluffing us regarding what you say about the homeless and specifically with the camping ordinance. You seem really happy when talking about things that everybody's gonna like, like the women equity. I don't blame you. And then your whole expression and the way you handle yourself changes when talking about something that's hard for you to deal with, and something that you don't know how to handle it. In poker, there's a series of betting, and then at the very end, you have to show your cards, which is when we find out if the person is bluffing or not. Well, me and everybody that spoke before me, we've called your bluff. We don't believe you. And now you have a chance to save lives, and in this camping ordinance, so that at least people can have their blankets and their tents and not freeze to death. And now you continue to do a thing we call in poker, which is distract from the outs, which is you say, let's not have it take away from the funding, let's not have it take away from getting permanent housing. I feel like this will be a distraction. Nobody would be distracted for getting money for permanent housing if we got rid of this camping ordinance. I guarantee you, after the camping ordinance, everybody would still want permanent housing. And the least that you could do is in this camping ordinance. I didn't have time to watch everything that you spoke about in regards to your campaign, but one of the things I did see was that you were gonna fight and support the homeless. What I didn't realize is you were gonna give the same lines we've been hearing for years about the camping ordinance, and you were gonna defend it. I would never have supported a candidate that I didn't realize would, would not finally do the right thing and allow people to keep their blankets and tents. How many deaths, Mr. Steinberg? How many deaths? Thank you.
Thank you for testifying.
Is Louis Morante here? Okay, Louis. Following that is Jeffrey Tartaglia, and then Guy, G-Y.
Hi, y'all. My name is Louis Morante. I'm a board member on the Midtown Neighborhood Association. On January 15th, the Midtown and Oak Park Neighborhood Associations wrote a letter to the city encouraging the city to make 100% of the transportation development impact fee currently under consideration by the city benefit bicycle, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure. My understanding is the law and legislation committee today increased the percentage of the fee to 25% from the originally considered 20% for these good uses. I thank you for this increase, but encourage you, your staff, and city employees to work towards 100% as we've set as our goal. To do this, please remove all highway widening and car-centric projects from the list of eligible projects. We look forward to the work of the planning commission, which here's the issue next, but my association is available to you and your office, offices to work together on this essential issue at any time. We in the Midtown Neighborhood Association want to be helpful partners in the process of updating these transportation policies. After three public meetings, outreach to our membership and city staff, our, and other community organizations in Sacramento, we ask you to remove all car-centric projects like highway widening from that list. During the city's November 7th, 2016 Vision Zero Task Force meeting, we identified guiding principles as examples for Sacramento. Portland's is to address, Portland, one of those identified, has stated that its goal is to address the disproportionate burden of traffic fatalities and serious injuries on communities of concern, including people of color, low-income households, other adults and youth, people with disabilities, people with limited English proficiency, and households with limited vehicle access. Another example for us is Los Angeles, who states, or which states, "Our streets must be safe for people of all ages and abilities traveling by all modes of transportation, prioritizing people walking and other vulnerable users such as children."
Thank you, your time, your time is up, sir.
And enhance safety for everyone. Thank you.
Hate you coming to testify. Thank you. Yes.
Louis, if you don't mind, I'd like to chat with you afterwards about, about it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Hey, Jeffrey?
Thank you for coming forward.
Hello, council and mayor. As you probably now know, tomorrow will be the. As you probably now know, tomorrow will be the count of the homeless taking place here in Sacramento. I also would say there's a lot of pent-up energy, obviously, that you are having to dissuade from, from a long time period. What I'm going to offer you, to suggest to you is for the next couple of meetings, if this goes up, is the back of your, what your little thing is on speaking, is maybe when you, for public speaking, you might want to post it for a couple, just on the decorum of what you want for public speaking. But I'm also going to offer you, say, one of the best things that you've had for the homeless is this lovely Francis house out there. It needs to be updated, and it needs to be corrected, but it is one of the pieces that have been in this Sacramento community for a very long time. Now, as this morning of participating with the county, and what you will soon learn next week is that for HUD and everything else, it's probably at least 45 to 60-plus days before much can change in regard to housing. As last year, a number of different ways, you restricted in the city the amount of affordable housing. This Monday, you at Heart Center, the affordable housing requires a minimum of $1,100 to apply for affordable housing, and it is six months plus for a waiting list. These are all factors you're going to have to work on. Also, what I'll offer is to Steve, I've applied for the city, what is it, administrative program, academy program? We'll see what happens with that. Last year, I applied for the disability and got no answer from the city whatsoever.
Time is up, Jeffrey, please. We'll make sure you get an answer.
Okay, sorry. The other thing, Steve, don't forget Thursday, paratransit, 6 o'clock.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Guy. Following Guy is T. Le Clues.
Sir, you want to use the podium there?
I want to.
Okay, go ahead.
Pass it for me.
Go ahead. Yep.
Can you make that bigger? Can you make that wider? Excuse me. Whoever's.
We can read it. Go ahead.
I'm demanding the police do their job. Last week, I spoke about what it takes for an Asian to get some response by the police. They had to make their own patrol, they needed 2,000 signatures, they needed help by the mayor. In this article here, the, this is how the Asians described the response by the police. A lackluster response by the police. Asians feared retaliation from the police and the criminal. This is racism. This is, we're not important. Only if the police did their jobs, they said. What happened to the 14th Amendment, equal protection under law for all races, whether you're rich or poor, homeless or not homeless? Now, the chief had described in the article last weekend, he became a police because his bike got stolen, he used the bigger guy to get the bike back. Well, that's kind of like a vigilante. How come you didn't ask your dad or your grandfather to call the police? Well, probably because your dad and grandfather's like my dad and grandfather.
No personal attacks here. Come on, keep it to the issue.
But they know that they're not going to help the Asians.
Okay. Thank you for.
The more things change, the more things stay the same. Now, don't just take my word for it. Let's look at Yelp, what the police department rating was. Two and a half stars. Any business in Sacramento with two and a half stars are not going to be lasting very long. What are some of the comments? Do a better job. Why are the police not helping us? I advise everybody to take a look at Yelp. I called back in a few days to find out, nothing's been done. Almost 50 days have passed. You have to have your, be walking with your guts in your hand for the police car to stop. They respond late, and when they do, they don't bother with an investigation incident or even writing a report. It goes on and on. Last week after the meeting.
Time's up, sir. Thank you. You come back next week and continue it, okay? Thank you.
Angela, Angela Tillotson is next, then Michael Voy, and then Benji, I'm sorry, I can't read this, but it looks like Luzada, I'm not sure. And the last speaker is CJ.
I am fired up, so, but before I start, I just want to tell you that I used the Park Mobile app for the first time tonight. Oh, my God, that's really, really great, so thank you. So, you know, I've spent a lot of my life fighting sometime, for different reasons, you know, not that I always liked to, but recent events have reignited that fire in me. Councilmember Ashby's event last week, the march on Saturday, the passage of the ordinance tonight, Governor Brown's State of the State today, and... So, okay, so let me shift. I was at the California Economic Summit in December. Raj Chetty was there from Stanford, talking about data and children when they live in communities of opportunity, and he said that children born in 1940 had somewhere like an 80 to 90% chance of doing better than their parents. Children born in the 80s, that's down to 40 to 50%. And so in many ways, it's almost like the American dream. People have this dream for their children to do better. People come to America in pursuit of the American dream. And with some of the changes that are going on now, it's, I've seen headlines that the American dream is dead. But Sacramento is one of the most diverse cities in the nation. It's either the most integrated or one of the most integrated, and I believe that all of us working together, we can make it the most equitable, so that we may, the American dream may be dead, but we can create a Sacramento dream. And I am here to offer my help and whatever I can do, so that we, as a city, can create the Sacramento dream, even if the American dream is dead.
That's what we're after. Thank you so much, Angela. Next.
Michael? Michael Voy here.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Council members? I'm going to be very, very brief. This is kind of an unusual thing, and maybe something like this already exists, but every week when I come, various council members present awards, have mentioned of groups. Angelique mentioned several tonight, the women's leadership groups, and there was, I remember the evening from the rails, there were awards and presentations made to individuals And sometimes I'd like to follow up or know, have contact information for these people, and I was just wondering that when the council initiates a mention of someone, that maybe for a couple of weeks after that meeting, that those groups are categorized, like for diversity, education, or whatever, and their contact information is put on a website or there's some way that people can follow up, because maybe they can recruit volunteers, a lot of different things. And that's the only thing that I'd like to say.
Good idea. Interesting idea. Thank you.
Hey, Benji?
It's been a long night, so I'll keep this short for y'all. I'm a person of color queer youth in the South Sacramento area. I'm here to plead the council to not forget some simple things. Please do not forget that trans women are also women. Please do not forget that non-passing trans women are still women. Additionally, I'd like to remind the council to not forget that there are queer youth still suffering in our communities, suffering due to the lack of outreach, suffering due to the lack of understanding. The wellness of the queer youth community should be highlighted for a diverse Sacramento. Things have changed for queer youth. Just as gender and sexual identity, the queer youth community is fluid, and that actions for the queer community goes past rainbow sidewalks. Steve Hansen, as a queer youth, I plead that you listen. Lastly, divest from banks that support DAPL and take that money and invest in the welfare of the underprivileged population, specifically the homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you.
CJ is next, and CJ will be our last speaker.
Hello, everyone. I'm CJ. I'm 19. I came here last time when we had KJ. I don't know you, Mayor Steinberg. I haven't met you yet personally, and usually.
Nice to meet you.
I am also with the LGBT group. I'm bisexual, and there is a lot of problems, but I request I am going to change my subject because of a very rude attack on the homeless. And it's not our fault that we are messy, it's just we move places, and when people are telling us that our places are trash, well, what do you expect? We're being treated like trash. Like, I was told that if I was to sign up to every shelter, I would get accepted sooner or later. I've been homeless for two years. As a minor of 17, who lost his mother at 13, who had a kidney stone, unfortunately, and who has anxiety and bipolar, I had to get arrested to get into housing for self-defense. And I appreciate District 1, because I might be a male, but I do support women's rights. I have a lot of friends who are women, and they deal with struggles like healthcare, childcare, and stuff like that. So I do appreciate that a lot. I have a lot of friends who actually love you, and they wish they could meet you, but they can't, because they're out of state, but, yeah. And District 4, I heard a lot of good things about you. I'm actually a big fan of you. You actually were my idol when I was 16, because I actually felt like you were trying to at least help a lot of people, and I thank you for that. District 3, the same thing goes for you, too. You helped us a lot, and I hope that you both continue to help us a lot.
Is there anything we can do to help you?
Well, I mean, you can update your resources. That'd be nice. It's not your guys' fault, I can understand, you guys are always busy, but the resources that I have been getting, they're either outdated, the phone numbers are gone, or that place is closed.
Can we have one of our team meet with you, maybe after the meeting, and see if there's a way we can help you specifically? You seem like a very nice young person who's looking for some help.
My goal has been to get as much resources as I can. That way, whatever resources I don't qualify for, I pass it on.
Okay.
Because I know there's a lot of people that require.
That's, time's up on the public, but we're happy to try to talk to you after the meeting and see if we might, if we might help you. Arturo, well? Okay? Angelique?
That's our last speaker.
That's our last speaker. Why don't we do council ideas and questions, and you can...
I just wanted to, I'll catch him.
Okay. Okay. Council ideas and questions. Councilmember Carr, did you have something?
Last time.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Okay, a few quick announcements. There's a Natomas Community Association meeting tomorrow, January 25th, at 6:30 at the South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Druxel Road. Tomorrow night is the point-in-time mapping of homeless folks count, point-in-time count, and it's a pretty interesting event, and it's an important one. So if you care to help, you can go to www.hansonsuperiorcal.org, or contact the office at 916-808-7003. That's my office. This Friday, January 27th, at 10, actually 10:30 in the morning, there will be a ribbon cutting for the new Hawk signal at Folsom and Elvis Avenue. But here's the thing I wanted to tell you about. I've been working on homeless housing possibilities for a while, and starting next Monday, I'm going to have a unit parked out here on Ninth Street. It's a 160-square-foot prefabricated affordable dwelling created, it's pre-engineered, it's created by a developer down in San Francisco. I think this thing has real potential, and I invite you all to come and see it. It'll be here for three days. So please, come and have a look. It's a pretty interesting unit. It's called the San Francisco Micro Pad, and I've been to it, I went down to San Francisco and looked at it.
Where again will it be parked, Jeff? Where again will it be parked?
It will be parked right here on Ninth Street, January 30th, 31st, and February 1st. Be here all day. It'll be open to the public, to homeless, to those who are housed, to electeds, to anybody who I can get to set foot in it. And I think that it has tremendous potential, so I invite you to come have a look.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jeff. Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carr and I had a Home Depot hiring event last week. I mentioned it last week, and I just want to give a good report, that we had over 200 applicants interview for jobs, and over that 200, many of them were offered a job with a starting date before they left. There are still some positions available at some of the stores. If you know someone who's interested, or if you're interested yourself, please visit the website at www.careers, with an S, dot home depot dot com to apply. So just want to make sure you know about that. Once again, that's www.careers dot home depot dot com. And also, we're accepting applications, Students Are First, to put their empathy into action at the Arts of Commission showcase. Empathy is the Sacramento City Unified School District's social-emotional learning focus for February. The students are invited to put empathy into action by participating in the Arts of Compassion Campaign during the month of February, and they can do that by performing and documenting acts of compassion in their school, home, or community. They can also express compassion through digital, visual, or performing arts. Participating students will have the opportunity to enter their completed projects for awards and scholarship consideration in the month of March. And for more information, you can visit wwwscusd.edu or edu.art.compassion. If that's too long, contact my office, and we'll give you the address. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Councilmember Geta?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Also want to encourage the community to come out to, on Friday, to the ribbon cutting for the pedestrian cross signal on Folsom Boulevard. That's been a long time coming for both the Esack and Tahoe Park community to find a safe way to cross Folsom Boulevard. On Saturday, also, there is the weather prognosis. So far, is full sun, so join us for the Little Saigon Tet Parade down Stockton Boulevard. We want to get eyes on the street, people out on Stockton Boulevard, for the Little Saigon Tet Parade and the Lunar Flower Festival, which will go there all weekend long. Hope you'll join us there for that event, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Eric. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I did punch up.
Okay.
I'd like to invite everyone in District 8, in fact, everyone all over the city. We're having a D8 Art Summit at the Crocker this Saturday from 8:30 until, we're going to go around the district in buses, look at sites, and the idea is to select a site or sites and display an iconic piece of art in District 8, something that will really brand the district. And so we're looking for ideas from everyone who works out there, lives out there, or people generally with ideas about iconic pieces of art. Come join us at the Crocker, that's at 216 O Street at 8:30 on Saturday.
Very good. That's great. Terrific. Shirley, and then I'm going to have one last word.
Okay, so we have some board and commission appointments. Administration, Investment, and Fiscal Management Board is David D. Camilla. Paratransit Board of Director, Scott Levinton. Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Commission, Stajabu Stajabu. And Sacramento Environmental Commission, Diane Kinderman and Mark Berry.
Very good. Thank you. Last word, last word on this issue of homelessness, which is very important and dominates a lot of our discussion. Next Tuesday, for really the first time ever that we know of, the city and county are going to meet in joint session, 6 o'clock next Tuesday at the County Board of Supervisors, to not only talk, but to hopefully take significant action to begin improving this situation. And I want to be clear with not just the members of the audience, members of the public, I know it'll be reported in the Sacramento Bee tomorrow, that we are bringing forward a resolution that seeks to redirect 1,600 units of the city and county's public housing program to permanent housing for the homeless, 1,600 units. In addition, Supervisor Surrinai now is teeing up the issue of how we locate and pay for triage centers. This is a start. We also plan joint meetings in February and March, and so I look forward to next Tuesday as a very significant beginning, because we can do a lot here, the county can do a lot on their end. do a lot here, the county can do a lot on their end, but together, we can make a serious and significant impact here. So we'll see you next Tuesday. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.